All right, minutes, approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on February 18th. I'm sorry, February 16th, 2022. Any additions, deletions, corrections? With none, we will approve them by unanimous consent. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the council. On agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote, speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, depending on how many speakers we have tonight. Would anyone from the public like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move to item number four.
Steve, I have a quick question. Who's taking minutes? I just want to make sure it's not me. Okay, it's Mark. Okay.
Yes, yeah. Want to be sure. Thank you very much. And Mark said, don't don't count on him to add a lot because he's going to be busy writing here. So hopefully he'll keep up. All right, item number four, I see Kevin out there. Good evening, Kevin. Can you you can hear us, right?
I can, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, and thank you for joining us from your vacation. You're never actually on vacation. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyway, good to see everyone by Zoom. I have a relatively brief report tonight because when I went to put it together, I realized there hasn't been a lot of change since the February meeting. But I'll give you a few. Obviously, first of all, we talked about COVID. We saw a slight uptick in cases, positive cases after the school break, and we're continuing to see school cases. But it, you know, looks like this is waning, hopefully. And the Health Department will continue to offer vaccinations and boosters and three, three days a week testing. So that's where we stand on COVID. I don't have an update on capital projects because I realize nothing has really developed since last month. When I gave you update on capital projects, they they sort of died down during the winter months anyway. Nothing to report on 220, although the superintendent is moving forward with his plans and very happy to have the Board of Finance complete their budget, and they did a lot of constructive work to bring the increase down to 4.58%. From where we started at 6.5% with the Board of Selectmen. And so I think it's turned out to be a very, very constructive budget and one that although we're facing headwinds with inflation and health expenses in particular, we're coming up in a good place. We've been working for the past month to try to bring forward the Playhouse Plan. As you know, you're going to hear presentation next week, and we're very close to having a an agreement with the proposed operator, and we hope that the Town Council will look favorably on funding the renovation of the Playhouse so we can open it by year end. And then nothing new to report on the 1837 Owens Ridge Tower. I haven't heard anything further on the Soundview Lane Tower. We are working on a couple other locations and keep them promising, but you know, I think again, the important thing recognized is is the carriers are very interested in New Canaan right now, which is very heartening. ARPA, we have one item on your agenda tonight, and you know, the community foundation process is moving forward, and they should have their results by April or May. And we have three items that we're working on a plan with Silver Hill Hospital for a behavioral health program. And hopefully, we will bring also, we're looking at the three large ones, WAVE, YMCA, and I guess Powerhouse offline, and we will hopefully bring those forward in April. As far as 751, we there's really no nothing to update. We've been trying to add information to the town website so people can find all the information in one place. We added a description about the our moratorium, history and and process and I think that's, oh, I skipped on capital projects, I meant to mention that the Police Department was fully funded at $17 million by the Board of Finance. And I expect we will have a Board of Finance meeting, a special meeting in the next couple of weeks, and then see where we're coming out. We are currently doing the deeper dive, as I mentioned last month into the envelope, and that's being done actually this week. And so I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. And I really don't have a lot of time tonight, so we're going to try to move through this as quickly as we can. We've got about a three hour meeting, so I appreciate it, Kevin. Thank you for joining us from your vacation, and please enjoy the rest of it because we got a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, Maria has one for you before you go.
Sure. I understand the YMCA is for expanding infant care?
No, actually, they withdrew that. They 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 decided it's too expensive for them to do, so that is not their their plan. I think they substituted a CHP unit as a as a request.
Well, I do know St. Ella was just schools undertaking a huge building project, and they put in a request for a supplement for 40 preschool slots, an early learning center. So I'm hoping that can come to the Town Council so we can discuss it.
Actually, you know, we haven't discussed that. We actually are, on the one hand, whereas we see a need for infant daycare, the pre-K venues in town are quite robust. And so I'm not sure, you know, we do always say any as an answer, but I think we will. My my personal reaction was we'll discuss it at the Selectmen and then bring it forward is it doesn't really meet the criteria for what the town's needs are, but that's my quick reaction, Maria.
Well, I know Tiger mentioned for the Nature Center preschool slots, he he said it a few times that it is pre-K preschool is a need in town, and I would disagree. Like, I mean, I remember being on wait lists, so I I think we definitely need to discuss that further.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can. We can certainly have a discussion about surrounding that whole subject, and that'll that'll come up during our ARPA conversation for sure. So let's we'll keep that. Kevin is okay with you. We're going to keep that at least as a as an item to discuss, so.
Sure, it's on it's it's on your agenda for subcommittee meetings.
Right. All right, very good.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Steve, wait, Kevin, don't get off yet. Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, sorry, I forgot you were out there.
Sorry to keep you. Just a very quick question. I'm happy. First, I'm happy to hear that the police station got funding by the Board of Finance, and I can't wait to see that move forward. Secondly, is there any, Kevin, is there any color that you can give us on the 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 rejected offer for Vine Cottage from the Land Trust? I I've gotten several emails from members of the public, and there seems to be some confusion about why that offer was rejected out of hand, and I just wonder if there's anything you can say about that.
Sure, I'd be happy to. You know, we discussed it in the in the Board of Selectmen because we actually met an executive session to decide whether we should negotiate with the Land Trust. We have an indication that the value of that property is three times what the was being offered by the Land Trust. If we get to the point where we want to, you know, sort of give it away to a nonprofit, local, an important local nonprofit, we could, but right now, for one, we really need it for the Health Department. And and secondly, we just saw it's hard to square disposing of a property to a nonprofit for a third of what it's what its value is.
Okay, I appreciate that answer. Thanks. It gives us something to go back to some of the townspeople with that are asking about it. And so that's that's good to know. Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary. All right, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to item number number five. Todd Lavieri, Chairman of the Board of Finance, has been nice enough to join us tonight. Todd, why don't you come up? And we have a Town Council overview of the budget.
And Josh, just because they've got also details, great, particular questions, is that okay?
Yeah, and actually, Josh, you're up with a consolidated budget overview anyway on the next item, so we can roll right into you. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I mean, if we've it's perfect, because if we can save minutes off of tonight, we've got a long night ahead, so. And before you start, I just want to, you know, thank Todd and the entire Board of Finance for all the work you did to get us to this point. You guys put a lot of hours in, so so thank you on behalf of the council, on behalf of the town. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Is that on their tablets?
It should be available.
So I put I put I put together some comments that I prepared, but I made a bullet form of it.
Perfect.
Just so that you had that for now to follow or to just have for future reference, whatever the case may be. But thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Town Council. Appreciate the opportunity to do the handoff and see if there are any questions or anything. Obviously, every year comes with its own set of issues and challenges and opportunities, and this one was no different. I got to start with a shout out to the departments that I have to say they all worked really, really hard. As always, we can never thank Tiger and his team enough. But as you also know, Anne started here like 10 minutes ago. She dropped right into this process, and it's like she's been here five years. It's unbelievable. Same with Josh. They did just a really tremendous job, so I just wanted to give them a quick shout out. So so look, in summary, I would say this, our town is in great financial shape, but as always, there's always things that we need to work on, and so let me and keep an eye on. Let me share a few thoughts. As you know, over the prior four years, the Board of Finance, working with the Town Council and the Selectmen's Office, we've been able to hold the amount of money raised by taxation flat for four years. That is unprecedented achievement, certainly in recent history. We're able to do this while continuing to invest in the town, our facilities, and especially our great school system that continues to rank among the best. Had we increased spending at a rate of two and a half percent each year, as many towns did, the taxpayers would have spent an additional $18.8 million over the same four year period. So by keeping spending and taxes and check and taxes flat, we're able to avoid $18.8 million in additional taxes over the last four years, and that's that's saved forever. Now, whatever we do going forward is on us, right? But that 18 million is is literally in the bank. So so that is a lot of, I think, good work on the part of everybody. If we had done that, our mill rate would have been nearly 20 instead of 18.16. Over the same four years, we also reduced the town debt from about $120 million four years ago to a low of $93 million last fall, down over 20% during that period, and really down more than 40% from the peak periods. So with a lower base to operate from, we feel very confident we can safely add debt for key capital projects now, including the library, of course, school building maintenance, new police station, so forth. We've also issued and refinanced debt at historically low levels. And as you know, I think you all know, we pay down our principal and interest costs on a straight line basis each year, so we reduce our debt at about $17 million a year. And then, of course, we add new debt for new project. In fact, that's sort of one of our unofficial guidelines. We'd like to add about what we reduce it by or less. And of course, that's what we've done now for four years. That's why it's come down, of course. And now this year, we're talking about 12 million of new capital plus a police station. So it's 29, really. But obviously, the police station is kind of a once in a generation or two generation kind of cycles. So without his background, I think, as you saw last week, the Board of Finance approved the town budget. The budget does include an increase in the amount of money raised by taxation for the first time in four years. Our total budget is 161.5 million, up 4.58%, as Kevin said. We worked to reduce the original request by over $3.5 million. You should have that list of those. They have a list of those. You have the list of those changes. One of them, though, you might not see on your list. We met with the in our liaison meeting with the the Board of Ed back in January, and we talked about the increases, and and they went to work, and when they submitted their budget to the Selectmen's Office, it was down $1 million after going back and forth on some things, and they they solved for that themselves. So so that million plus the other 3 million, I guess, that we took out was was a big help to get it down as low as it got. But obviously, given inflation and rising healthcare costs, the amount to be raised by taxation will be 144.74 million, up 3.25%. So of course, been zero for four years, up three. The average over the last three years is a little over 1% a year, of course. But, you know, we're a little disappointed. It's still an increase. That was almost unavoidable, but we've worked hard to keep it as low as we got it. The mill rate is projected with the budget that we've sent you to increase 1.48%, so going from 18.16 to 18.43. The grand list increased 1.76% to nearly $8 billion, 7.94 billion, from the 2020 net grand list value of 7.8 billion. The budget fully funds our schools, police, fire, in-town programs. The budget supports our parks, the Health and Human Services, all the Health and Human Services requests, actually. All the emergency services, town sports, town departments, and so many important programs and initiatives, including necessary capital needs for roads, buildings, and equipment. I think through the all the careful planning and spending and planning that we've done, we've not cut any school programs or sports or arts, teachers, and social programs, emergency services, or safety spending. In fact, as we went through some of the meetings, you were here, Steve, for many of them. We were asking human services, safety, health, do you need, do you need more? Do you need more masks? Do you need more this? Do you need more that? I don't remember anybody coming back and saying they need anything, right? So they, you know, they have what they needed, and they're really managing budgets extremely well. So we're in strong financial shape. Rain Day Fund is in our range, which we plan for, which is about 15% of our annual budget, or about $24 million. Our town pension is fully funded at 110%. I think that's a high since I've been the chair. The fund, the pension is funded at 110%. And op-ed funding is at a record 83% for the town of New Canaan. I think four or five years ago, it was in the low to mid 60s, which we patted ourselves on the back, and we clapped and cheered and thought we gave high fives to each other. 85, 83. I think it's the highest in the state. Anne tells me there's some town north of here. I don't remember its name, and it's some near, it's like 100, which, okay, I gotta, I want to see the data. 83 is 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 earth shaking, you know, that's phenomenal. We don't really have a concern there. Of course, many towns, as you all know, are in the 20, 30, 40, maybe 50s high, you know, for OPEC. So as has been the case for decades, the Board of Finance supports our great school system. That's why it's a leading district. As we all know, and as our our Board of Ed Chair and our and our Superintendent and his team, it takes time, it takes commitment, and it takes leadership every single day. We have a small role. We figure out how to find the money, and they they make it work. We want to retain our great schools for the next decade. I think we're all, I think we all consider that to be a top priority. The budget we approved last week invested about 108 million in the schools to cover everything, including health expenses, operating expenses, teachers, administrative costs, aid, substitutes, buses, sports, arts, capital and debt, and all the other town support expenses for the Board of Ed, including pension costs, 401A costs, lease equipment costs. The town has always believed that it's an important social responsibility to have a leading school district. We will always assess spending and ask how to optimize the money spent. But I believe the town bodies share a common goal, providing for and delivering a top tier school district every year. Regarding capital, as you saw, we included 17 and a half million dollars as a placeholder for the Police Department, and another 12 million dollars for all the other projects that you see. We have two significant decisions to make. Should we invest in and keep the movie theater? And how should we proceed with the Police Department? We are money for both at this point, really to show our support and to keep it rolling in both cases, different tracks, but important to keep those balls rolling. And we want to show our support not only to do police building, but continue to assess the next steps, potential next steps with the movie theater. So in closing, we'll maintain financial strength as a town. We'll continuously improve our town assets, our services and our support, all the support that the residents expect. That's what this budget does, I believe. And as I said last year, we work to provide value while helping New Canaan succeed financially in good times and in bad. So those are my comments, and you have the headlines in the on the screen, but also in the on your tablets. So we're happy to answer questions. We can merge the the review that you wanted to do.
Sure.
Anything you.
No, I mean, you really covered all the the key points.
You want me to wrap it up, say anything?
Todd, just real quick. The change in the pension funding, is that primarily a sudden change of assumptions or assets doing beautifully, or what?
Sudden change in assets doing beautifully.
Okay.
I mean, for three years, the assets have done beautifully, right? So we were always around 100. You, I think we've been at 100 plus, 100 in single digits again for four or five years, but it's 109, 110% funded now. So it's a big asset increase on both OPEC and pension. The funds did really, really.
And so we're going to ratchet down the contribution this year, or?
600,000.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah.
Which isn't risky. It's just it's solid.
It's common sense in that way. I mean, to just continue to overfund the overfunded.
Right.
At 110, I think we can safely say we don't need to add a million seven. A million will get the job done this year. So I think we'd be very confident about that.
I have a question about the rainy day fund. Can you talk a little bit about how money gets into that fund and how you decide how to partial out? Is it a percentage of another larger amount of money that the town has?
Really good question. We should talk about this every year. So it takes years to build that fund. It's a literally an unassigned savings account that the town has is a really good way to look at it, and literally has taken years. Trip, all the rating agencies really require that we have at least 10% of our budget in there for AAA rating. So 10% of 160, 16 million, so 16 million is kind of the floor, right? We like more for several reasons. We don't get any help, not much, I can't say any help publicly. We get very little help from the state. Other towns get millions and millions of dollars. We, I don't know, the total amount we get this year, you could tell me. It'll be a million bucks. Will it be that much?
If we're lucky.
Half of 1%. So we know we own whatever we're going to spend, so we have no liberties in that regard. So when something happens, there's no place to go but the town of New Canaan. So that happened, as you know, the last couple of years with with funding for various little emergency expenses. The second thing is, I think we're all prudently aware about unfunded expenses coming our way, unfunded mandates. This comes and goes as a popular theme. But the state does not have the same. It states doing better financially, but still has financial challenges. So we know that there's always a risk that an unfunded mandate could come our way. We may not be able to handle an unfunded mandate out of the savings account, but we could possibly take the sting out in a year or two and figure it out. So there's always a reason to have a little more in that for that reason. And I would say the third thing is, this is a town that expects great service and wants some value. So we want to, we always have kept a little more in there. So when we need to find 500,000 for this or 200,000 for that, we can find a way to do it and avoid the taxes. The way the budget works is we 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 budget with the idea that we will actually have a surplus because we think we'll spend less and we think we'll earn more. But that doesn't always happen. We didn't get parking fees, right, during coast. So there's reasons why there's, you know, there's cushion in the budget, but that one got eaten up, eaten up pretty, pretty quickly. But we do that, having that extra bit in there also because when something comes along, we can take care of it. If the town wants it, you know, we can make it happen. We can do something. We can, we can find those, find those funds or do some private partner sharing or those kinds of things. So it can disappear in two budget cycles. I am not kidding you. You, we, when I say we have to keep an eye on things, we have to keep an eye on things. And so it's the it's it's our savings bank account that we can use to protect the town in lots of different ways, and we don't want to get too high. It's taxpayers' money, you know, at 30, 31. That's hot, that's a lot. At 22, that's when I got out of my comfort zone. So it's, we like to keep it right in that that area, and and so it's been as high as 29, 30, 31. So we just pay that. What we do is we end up paying ourselves back that money to pay the mill rate down, right? You understand how that works? We just give, we basically deduct that from the taxes owed by the taxpayers, and that's what so it reduces the amount raised by taxation. We have to be careful with that because five, three, four, two, three, four million probably we'll use this year. Josh tells me two and a half out of that five. So, you know, we nick away at a little bit. We've got to be careful. So probably a longer answer than you were looking for.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That really makes it clear. Thank you.
I have a quick question, Todd. Is the rainy day fund including the ARPA funds, or is that in a separate?
Yeah, all separate. A few things it doesn't include. It doesn't include ARPA, and it's a good question, and it doesn't include. Do people think it does?
No.
Okay. And it doesn't include ARPA, and it doesn't include assigned funds, right? This is unassigned. There are assigned funds. They may be sitting in cash. We have an assigned fund for health services, our share of the corridor for the Board of Ed expenses. So that's cash in the bank, but it's it is assigned. Auditors, actuaries, they want to see that that's there, right? That that that's that matters. We probably have a few other assigned funds. We also have, you know, reserve funds, reserve fund in the water treatment facility where we're building up, we know we have deferred capital expense and 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 deferred maintenance coming, and we so we want to that could be a $9 million, $5 million hit. That's a huge hit in one year. So over time, every year, we add a little more. I think it's running at three and a half million, three and a half, four million. So when that hit comes, we can soften the blow, you know, along the way. The movie theater, we had a surplus of $900,000, again, for deferred maintenance. The pool had a pool fund for deferred. So we do all these things to prudently manage all those assets so that we don't at any one time hit six, seven, eight million dollars of assessments for deferred maintenance and come, you know, come to you guys, say, we were lucky to get it down, you know, we're only going to go up 10% this year, and that would be a disaster. So that's so those funds, none of those funds are in the rainy day fund either.
Okay, thank you.
So the the school share of the ISF corridor, the 1.3 million or whatever that we decided to leave on the town side, is that in an aside fund, or is that in the general?
So there's two, two pieces to that quarter. There's the town side and the in the Board of Ed side. The town side is the 1.7, schools is 1.2. 1.2. That that is, that's assigned.
Okay, so it's not this number.
No, 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 it's on the rainy day fund. No, no.
Great.
It's all signed.
So Todd, just so I can follow some of what you said about the general fund, how much is in there right now?
I don't know, 25 million, 26?
Closer to 26 now.
It's not the end of the year. So you got to remember that. We it's, you know, there's times when that's at 75 million, right, when taxes get paid, and then every month we 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 spend, take money out of there, but but so. It's probably in the upper mid, upper 20s.
Right, so are we taking money out of that this year to apply towards the mill rate? And that's what I'm just trying to understand. So how much do you approximate?
We've budgeted $5 million.
5 million.
But we expect to get a surplus this year because of the way that we manage the amount raised by taxation of 90, we we budget 98 and a half percent, so that gives us one and a half percent. So there's $2 million right there that we don't think we'll lose, but you never know. And there's some other things we think we will not use all of this year's, nor do we think we'll use all of next year's. We just don't know.
Okay.
So right now, we have $5 million going back to the taxpayers right now out of that fund.
That's great. I'm very, very.
That's what we would do it, right? I mean, yeah.
It's one thing I know I've been talking.
That's budgeted. That's going to happen for sure. The question will be, will we really pay ourselves back that 5 million through the process of the budget management next year? That's what we hope to do, so.
Right, and that's what I wanted to hear, because that's been an issue of mine for quite some time, is that making sure that we're not having excess funds. And I think your explanation tonight of the 15% I think went a long way to allay a lot of concern I've had about being overfunded in that account. So it's a point well taken, and I appreciate.
Just on that, there, we do what we do. Once in a while, we do get very positive surprises on the spending side. In the last two years, we've underspent our budget by, you know, a couple of million dollars. So when you add that, plus you get 2 million that we collected, we, you know, we wanted to be careful and not budget necessarily for. And then any luck, you know, we got conveyance fee luck. We got other luck. We had a Board of Ed, you know, bring some money back one year. All of a sudden, you're you're you could be 6 million to the good, not 5, and then you just added another million to the general fund that way. You understand? So I mean, that but we try to keep it in that 15%, and then with the best, you know, guidance and expectation, we didn't expect parking to go to zero. On the same token, we didn't expect conveyance to go to 2 million. So there's just, it goes up and down every year.
Thank you.
Yes, as for many times, as we've seen the upside, we've also lived through the downsides, which is not quite as fun as the upsides. I mean, it's.
Just to clarify, is the rainy day fund the same as the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I.
I'm so sorry.
Well, that's okay. I figured it was, but I didn't know. So we're taking 5 million out of the rainy day fund.
Yes, it's the same thing as the general, unassigned general fund. Think about it that way. You got to make sure you put the words unassigned in there because that that that's, yeah, those are the same thing.
I have a few more, but.
Maria, Maria, you're up next.
If we, being competitive and wanted to be five years in a row of 0%.
I love that question.
And you bet he does want to do that, right?
It's up to you. I mean, you know, cut away.
What is the amount that would have to get you to 0%?
Oh, boy.
I think it's like 2 million. It must be at least 2 million.
You got it. You got it in there. I'm going to say it's 2 to 3 million dollars. Yeah, maybe a little bit more. If you do it for cutting, that's one way to do it. You got to be careful to, we can, I can make, we can make it zero. I, we got to come back to you and say, you know what, forget 5 million, we'll do 8 million out of the general fund. But then you get, that's how you get into trouble, because that's not really your expense base. You've made the expense base lower by subsidizing it. That's the last thing we want to do, because next year, it's going to go up, plus whenever it's going to go up. So it's like holding a balloon underwater. At some point, you can't, that game, that game doesn't work, so. But it's a couple of million.
Well, you'll tell me, Josh. I think it's like two and a quarter.
So 2, 2 plus million dollars to go to, to go to zero. It's how you get there. If it's for cutting reasons, it'd be one thing that are if they're real cuts.
I'm assuming that the major part of the increase is due to salary adjustments through the new contracts.
Health expense and salary adjustments, materials, everything Tiger's trying to get is everything's more expensive. So, yeah. Mike, well, and we've, we've cut expenses also along the way. So those salary increases didn't just start this year. So those salary increases didn't just start this year. They're always in there. It's three percent, right? In most cases, not exactly, but most cases, most, most of the, the labor, labor numbers are three percent. But we've been able to fight that by cutting other areas, three percent or more to retake that out of there. But we just, you know, there's no more.
Mark's got it. Mark's got a quick one. Quickly, just to remind the public, the seventeen and a half million that you earmarked for the, for the police station, just say how you got to that number.
Great question. So we tried to take a number that was in the solution associated really with either renovate in place or rebuild on site. That's really the only guideline we had. We don't really have a plan yet. So for, for not having a final plan and strategy and decision made, we didn't want to pick ten million dollars because we didn't think that was quite right, or twenty or thirty didn't make sense either. So we tried to pick one that seemed like it supported the reasonable assumption that most people are thinking is probably the best option. But I don't know. I mean, we, we, we don't, we don't know yet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike.
Yeah, I interrupted Mike.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I know a lot of people have moved into town and that must have increased our tax, tax base. I'm just curious what, how that affected the tax.
Yeah, the, the, well, not re, I mean, they, they moved into town, but those people that they bought their house from were already paying.
There was like a net increase in folks?
Eighty, eighty-ish percent of our taxes, and we learned this in COVID, are paid through homeowners. Very unusually, high number of our taxes that are paid come from homeowners. Most towns have much more of a business community. Think about all the Route One businesses in Darien and Greenwich. I mean, those are all business enterprises, taxpayers. So they're more like sixty percent, fifty, sixty percent, maybe seventy percent from individual homeowners. So the town, okay, so the town, I mean, more homes would, would add to the tax base. But just people moving in doesn't really change anything. If they buy my house, they're paying the same taxes I was paying.
Right now, I thought there was a net increase in, in folks.
Could be in people. Again, it has to be in.
That was my understanding.
Well, the grand list went up one and change percent, which could have been on valuation and could have been on additional, additional properties. So.
I thought I saw the grand list went up a little bit. I think, is that what you're referring?
Yeah, the grand list went up one and, and change percent, which is, could be partly new, new assets and partly higher valuations.
Right, right. I, I was just curious on how that affected the overall revenue that we're, that we're receiving.
Yeah.
The conveyance, the, the, having the people move into town, you see that in the conveyance.
That's the.
Generator, not the tax side because of the fact someone's moving out, someone's moving in. So unless we have brand new buildings, as Todd had said, it's really the conveyance that we see that effect.
So that was a lot. That was, it's over two million dollars. I think we budgeted a million. We got a million dollars in excess as a result of all of that activity and home sales.
Okay.
Good question. Robin.
Do you foresee some departments having to come to you this year, Board of Finance, to ask for more money in their budgets? Let's say Department of Public Works because of fuel?
No.
No.
I mean, right now, they've got a projection for fuel and they, they do a very good job at forecasting it. It's a good question for Tiger, if you want to ask that question, then I won't speak for him, but we asked that same question and he thinks he's got it pretty, pretty reasonable.
I think that's a great question, because if you asked that five weeks ago,
Yeah.
you would have a totally different response. And then today it's almost triple. So it's bleeding into every aspect of the budget is, is fuel.
I believe they're partially hedged too.
And they're partially hedged. It's a good question to ask him for that reason. It's not a big number in the budget, but anyway. But if that was your only, the other departments, no, I think they're all. Like I said, we, we ask them, we do ask them, do you, you need more? Is there something else you need? Do you need more vests? Do you need more, you know?
Yeah, I was just thinking that meetings were three weeks ago is.
Yeah. Where we, where they'll see it is in construction for materials, right? That's, that's an unknown. Now, we don't have a huge, we're not redoing a lot this year. Superintendent can go through any of those projects, but that's where it's probably a little unpredictability. But bids are in, you know? That's a good question. Mike.
Sure. Todd, so, you know, look, your expertise is unmatched in this area for the Board of Finance. It really is. I mean, you're a great asset to the town. So I have a couple of questions, one in a large lens, look, focus, and then a little more narrow after that. It kind of plays off Maria's question, right? And a lot of these questions I'm about to ask you are coming in from a lot of different sectors in town and concerns and would like to know the responses. So just the managing expectations business, right? You know, ever getting, do you ever foresee the likelihood of getting to, or at least having the town having the fortitude to get to either, either a minimum of flat budget or something reduced that actually already factors in inflation? I mean, you've been doing this a long time.
We did that for four years, right? We hadn't, yeah. We have, remember, inflation is one thing, but a lot of the increase is driven by labor union and contracts that are already there. So we, we were, we're getting it three percent for the last ten years every year. So that's not new.
No, I understand. So, and having been on town council now for several years, every year, we always have an increase in the budget. So what I'm hearing is that the town really should never expect we will ever have a zero increase of the budget. Or even a reduction. And when I say that, you know, and it's just, again, it's managing expectations because people come up to me and say, hey, Mike, you're, you're, you say you're fiscally conservative and I hear there are others on Board of Finance, on Town Council. And it's not restricted to one party, political party or another. But when, you know, every year, there's always an increase. This year we have a large one and I understand it's a bit of an extenuating circumstance this year. So for people who are listening, you know, how do you respond to that? Do you see the, an effort ability to get to that of the four or two? Or is it really just a little too far out of our reach, but we really do the best we can?
Well, first of all, I appreciate the comments about, about my, my role and responsibilities, but I have a great board. I really have an amazing board. You have no idea, you do have an idea how hard they work, but how smart they are. They're very good at, at digging through a lot of these issues. It's a fair question, and I think you have to look at where the cost variables are. One of them's capital. We pay seventeen million dollars a year. You want to reduce the budget by three million? No more capital. In two years, that seventeen will be fifty, you could figure it out, tell me, it'll be fifteen. In four or five years, it'll be ten. Whoa, I used to take seven million dollars every year out of the budget by not adding any more debt. That's a real number. That's, that's a hard decision. You're going to stop everything. But that's, that is a big time variable right there. And it's not going to go to zero because we owe, you know, ninety-three million now, over a hundred because we put the library in there. But but on a straight line basis, you, you reduce that pretty quickly. And the, and it does, it starts to clip. I mean, you can model it, it cliffs in a few years. That's a big one.
Right.
So if we're going to increase two, three, four million a year on all the labor and everything else, and you're down seven, five in, in capital, that's one. That's really, that's a, that's a real one. It's just that, that's tough calls, tough decisions around things that we do, we don't want to do in the town. Making the town smaller, well, I mean, as you know, it's a hundred and sixty-one million dollar budget and a hundred million of it is in the Board of Ed. With L N, right? Not just operating, but everything over a hundred million dollars. So you know, we're not reducing it millions of dollars by having one less snowplow, right? You, you know, you have to go where the money is. I don't have an easy answer for that one. I don't, I don't know that that can reasonably go down. Could manage the growth of it?
Well, let me, let me ask you, let me ask you this, and I appreciate that. I understand the capital side. So there's two ancillary questions I have regarding what you just said. Right? So I think we are the highest bond to debt in the state. Isn't that correct?
I don't know about that. No, no, no. Oh, I know Darien's going over a hundred million now. Yeah.
So of course, as you said, as you, the way to, you know, address that is stop the capital, right? Arrest that capital spending, which that's.
Highest bonded debt, not in total, not even close. Highest bonded debt per capita? That's a good question. If that's what you meant. If you mean per capita, yeah. Again, I know some town, I won't speak for any other towns. We can look this up. I'm pretty sure Darien is, is on its way to go over a hundred million dollars. They will be either right with us or a little more than us. So that's a good benchmark.
Right, and.
But there's deferred maintenance. We've not deferred maintenance. We have middle schools in some towns falling down. I'm sure you read about that. You know, other schools, they've deferred their maintenance and now is, is catch up, which is going to be a tough catch up. Labor costs, they, they, that's a weight they probably shouldn't have weighed. Rates are still low, fair enough.
Right.
Costs are high.
Do you forecast that for the foreseeable future that we will have, will be in that kind of dubious, you know, distinction of being number one in, in debt per capita for the foreseeable future?
I'd have to get back to you. I'd have to get back to you. I mean, maybe. Now, it's a town that wants things.
That's right.
We, we, we wanted Irwin Park. We did a referendum on it. It was a lot of money. We wanted it. We wanted a new high school. We want new roofs. We want, we want a lot of things. We want a really nice waveney. You know, we don't want that falling down. I think we want a movie theater. I mean, name it. I think we need to not just want, whether we do or don't, we need a police station. So, I mean, you know.
That's the man, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Those are the things.
I guess we could pay for things as we go, but we're choosing not to. So that's.
You can't pay for that stuff as you go. I don't know why we'd want to at two percent.
Just so everyone understands what's happening with the mill rate.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we don't.
Or you're paying as you go and you're raising taxes.
I think we've done that. Well, I would say we've done the right thing. If we want these things and we need these things. Our last bond issue went out at one point five seven. We got more of that money. That's it. That's ridiculous, right? I mean, if you're going to, why would I, we tax the taxpayers? Would it get that kind of rate?
Right. And again, the purpose here of the questions is based on, you know, you're the guy to ask. And, and for people to understand the managing expectations. Because you said it very aptly earlier before, you know, we want.
We want stuff.
We want stuff. This is the town of New Canaan. So for people out there to understand, you know, you can have whatever you want, just got to pay for it. Right? So the other question I have though, and it really is the last one, I think. It plays off the, the, the debt issue and, you know, looking now at the operational side, right? And maybe having the town, you know, be a little smaller. So, you know, we are on, on, on your panel and as ours as well and many other in the town. You know, we're very blessed with highly intelligent people, most of them with, you know, post-secondary degrees and we're all very smart people and we all have great diverse areas of expertise. We have architects, lawyers, you know, financial people, business owners. We, we have, you know, private industry bankers, everybody, educational people. But we, we only can do so much when we scrutinize a budget, right? You know, we don't, we, we, first of all, it's not our full-time jobs. We have fantastic department heads everywhere, all over, all throughout the town. So there's a large portion of what we do on the town council and the Board of Finance that is relying upon the credibility of the people who are before us. Okay? Because everything is credibility. We always have to understand that we're getting the truth when people are saying, these are the dollars that I need and I can't cut. This is across the board. With that said, has the Board of Finance, to your knowledge, ever requested, or a town council, to your knowledge, if you're aware, ever requested or considered the idea of bringing in a third party independent, an independent third party to evaluate department by department budgets, like bringing in, you know, an Ernst and Young or something like that? Because we can only do so much. You can only do so much. You can ask the questions. You know, I don't think any of us is sitting next to any of the department heads as they're doing their zero-based budgeting from when they start. So have we ever considered that? And if not, do you think that that's at least a, a worthy of a good discussion here? Because that is a question people are saying, why wouldn't we bring in an outside order? Board of Directors do that all the time. So I'm just, and I know we have an audit committee, but it's not what I'm talking about. It's, you know, literally going in country with each department, having full access and walking through their operations. Is that something you've ever heard of?
Yeah. So when I first got here, the first thing I did is we benchmarked the eight or ten of the right kinds of towns, top schools, similar sizes. You know, and that sort of thing on a handful of important metrics. Education as a percentage of the total, town costs, public works and select person and all that stuff as a percentage of the totals and all the rest of it. Debt, debt expense as a percent. And we, so we looked at those kinds of metrics. Now, I, we didn't go into the public works and said, how much is snow plowing? Yeah. What are you going to do with that? You, snows, you have to pop. So we haven't, we, I've not ever done that. Not sure I'd want to pay a half a million dollars for that. You know, I don't, I don't see the return for, for some, for that sort of thing. But I think it's worthwhile dusting off the benchmarking set of questions to make us feel good that, or not good, that we, we, we benchmarked pretty well in terms of the way that we look at our, I bet we benchmarked the, the, the rainy day fund, the unassigned fund, the general fund as a percentage of the budget. So we looked at a lot of those things and we, we look really pretty good. And then when you factor in the grand list, you were number one. We're an eight billion dollars asset and we spend a hundred and sixty million dollars a year. This town, when I did this, that was the other thing I looked at. What's the amount of income in the town per, per family? And that's all public information, right? And I think it was two billion dollars at the time. So we have two billion dollars of income coming in and now we spend a hundred and sixty million dollars on eight billion dollars of assets. The numbers look ridic, they look so tiny. As a result, or related to all those assets. So, but I don't, I think it's not, if that's a require, I, I would, I'd be willing to go back and at least do a lot of that just to see where we stand. Now, you could say, well, who wants to be the best of, of an average? Then is there, is there another way to look at this that looks for real savings? That's a question for the, I, I would say we'd have to engage the first selectmen and I think you would have to decide whether or not you wanted to do that. I kind of hate spending money on it, even though it is literally what I do for a living. So, so I don't, I wouldn't charge the town a dime. I wouldn't do it. But it, it's worth looking at certain things.
The point, let me just pop in and I, I know we have to wrap it up, but the, the, what I look at a little bit differently on the value side because you know, when the department heads say to me, Mike, we're cut to the bone. We have nothing else that we can cut here. And if there was a third party that's saying a hundred percent correct, and I'm like, that's great. That's money well spent to me. The flip side, if I'm being told it's cut to the bone and the auditor comes in and says, well, actually here is, you know, a list of areas where we think that there's a little bit of softness and we really should take a closer look. That's money well spent. So I don't, I don't see it as a waste either way, because it's either going to confirm or being told, which there's value to that. Or there's potential savings to be found. So it's just something that, you know, like I said, it's a question that's out there. I've been thinking about it as well. But you've given me your position. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I also think that it's not also always about cutting, right? It's not, we want an evaluation, like are we doing this right? And if we're not doing it right, then we need to cut. It's a, are we spending the money appropriately, efficiently and effectively? And I also think that, I don't know if we need to say like, Darien did it and then we should do that too. And if they're, that's their percentage, that should be our benchmark. Or if we should be self-governing and saying, we're doing a good job because look at the past. Well, look at the market in the last ten years, it's gone up. If you're an investor in the last ten years in the market, you've probably done pretty good. So I think that their self-evaluation is excellent and definitely appropriate. But to have a third party confirm or validate what we're doing. Because what we did last year isn't always appropriate, what we're going to do next year. And, you know, a good point is inflation. I think that's going to play heavily. You know, we talked about three percent, but three percent to seven percent is ten percent in the next couple of months.
Not on labor. Big part of our costs. So I think you have to look to, to do that job. I would look at it, you have to look at two buckets. You have to look on the town side, which is about forty million in spending, all in, including debt, which we talked about, right? And school. So does Tiger have inefficiencies that save any money, you know? I mean, because the question would capitalize, do we need to spend it on this? Do we spend it on that? Yeah, we put a lot of trust and faith, partly because of the results, right? In terms of all that we've done. And if you look over the last several years, they've run a very lean business and, and have kept costs reasonable, right? They, they have to. Labor costs are going up three percent. We're not, our budget's really not increasing too much, tells you something because costs are coming out. The other thing we benchmarked were pensions and OPEB and all the rest of that. And we come out, you know, sailing on all of those kinds of metrics. So I think it's worth thinking about, but you have to look at both. If you're not going to look at the hundred and eight million, right? But if you're not, and if, in the town side, there's only a few areas where you can move the needle. But again, worth looking at if we want to look at them. Or we can start saying, no, no, we're not going to have a movie theater. No, we're not going to invest in a waveney. No, we're not going to invest in other, whatever. And those, those are the ways that, you know, that can make a difference over some time too. When you spread those investments out over twenty years, you don't feel.
You need a good point. We like good things.
We want those things, right? We do.
Well, I, can I just make one point though? I, I've been in companies where auditors have come in and decided that there are things that could be cut. I mean, they're successful if they identify things to cut. And a lot of times they're not familiar and what they've suggested to be cut was really bone and not meat. So I do think we, you know, I think, I think we need to be cautious, I think, going down that.
We look at our IT budgets. We don't talk about some of the, obviously the cyber stuff publicly or anything, but the town, they're doing a very good job there. And I think they're running that very leanly and well. So little things like that we have looked at.
To stay redispointed a different way, because you have the expertise. I imagine it's not cheap to hire somebody that could really dig and understand what we're trying to accomplish as a town and put prices on efficiencies to, to dig into that and learn our system. Could very easily cost more than you end up saving.
To be a real, yeah, could be, yeah. There, there, I'm sure there are people out there. It'd be interesting to see what they could find. Could you find a million dollars and forty million on the town side? I don't know. That's, that's, sounds like a little bit amount of money, but there's some things that are just untouchable. To your point, your, every dime is, that's what you have to have. So. I don't think it's a bad idea to ask and look, it's kind of our job, right? So we should at least get the benchmarks put. So we should at least get the benchmarks, put, refresh all of that, get that as a look. And then look around and see, is there someone that could look at some of those areas to see if there's, or even just different ways of doing what we do? Is there something we could do differently than we're, than we're just not thinking of? That really can be where you're not.
I feel like that's a better exercise.
You're not in the bone so much. You're just, you know what, timeout, we've done it this way, what about and do it that way? You might be, we could be pleasantly surprised with what people come back.
I agree.
Yeah.
If I may say. It's not all about cutting.
Hold on, hold on a sec. Hillary, you have the last word. We're coming up on eight o'clock and I wanna make sure that Todd comes back again at some point.
And I just wanna say too, I think that there's something psychologically we could do when we're speaking to our constituents, which is that we've been really smart about our use of debt. I don't like to hear that we have the dubious distinction of having the highest debt per capita, because I think we've used it in a really smart way to finance our capital projects when we've needed to. Debt has been so cheap, it would have been ridiculous to finance those projects in a different way. And to Todd's point, we've made, we've managed to get a lot of things done that a lot of towns haven't done. So I think that there's a way to talk about that debt and how we used it in a very smart and intelligent way. And stop focusing, I know we're all scared of debt. Everybody's scared to have debt personally and things like that. But I think as a town, it's been such a wise decision and we've been able to pay it down so well that we have to sort of change the narrative on that a bit and support what the board of finance has done. They've been incredible in not only taking out debt and, and our, our townspeople like a, a Lunda and, and now, um, sorry, I'm a little frazzled, but it's, I think that we need to change that narrative a little bit and stop looking at it as a dubious distinction. We've been super smart about it. Um, and so that's the kind of narrative that I'm putting out there is that I, I fully agree with that and I'm behind it a hundred percent. Anyway, good job, Todd. Thanks for that.
You actually have.
Really helpful.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Just, just one point to make though on spending to save, right? We did that and I don't, is Kevin still on?
No.
So we should get back to this on the amount of money we invested in solar and converting to natural gas with debt. And it, and there's real savings every year. I mean, that's something you, you have. Yeah. So that, that, that's been a, that's a, you know, that's saving us money. So we, we did invest to save and, and that, those were real dollars now every year too. So, um, yeah.
Steve, I'd like to say something. Todd, in the past, uh, when we had a different head to the board of, uh, finance, it was very difficult to bring ideas forth. And we spent a lot of time in subcommittees, looking at the budget and looking at different parts. If you look at the larger portions of the town expenditures, like the vehicle purchase and seeing that there are no hard benchmarks as to how the vehicles are replaced, how many miles, how, what condition they're in. And there's no third party that then takes the vehicles that we're not using and puts them to auction. You can see savings in basically creating benchmarks to better manage the process and not leave it to one person or one department to make those decisions.
Yeah, I, I agree on the benchmarks and getting that insight. I appreciate, I do appreciate that. I do, again, good question for Tiger. He does have a, we have a rotation policy based on miles. Um, and we do rotate them out. And I think, you know, we keep them forever. I mean, we have vehicles, we joke about that you can't use it anymore for this, just put a plow on it. Now we can, I mean, we, I mean, we really, I think there's a case where he squeezes, he laughed at us. I mean, cause these, these, they're really old. So, but it, but what is the actual policy on miles? I don't, I don't know it. But, and by the way, those I think we paid out cash this year.
We did.
So we didn't borrow money for them. We didn't tax the taxpayers.
But understand that it's not just public works that has vehicles.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a large number in our budget overall.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. Okay. That's a good point.
All right, great. So Luke, you wanna, can you, you have anything more for us or that? Yeah, we covered everything. All right.
You have everything? They have everything?
They should, yeah.
You have everything. So.
Todd, thanks again for coming and, uh, please come back if we invite you again.
Thank you.
And please, please send our, the board of finance again, did a great job and, and you hit it on the head. They are a smart group of, smart group of people. And, uh, they, we feel like we work really well with you guys and have a great relationship and, you know, can't thank you enough. So.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke. Thank you, man. All right. Next up. Board of Ed, Brian. Katrina. I think we learned more tonight already than, uh, two years in a row. Great session.
Welcome.
Great to see you guys.
And I will get us set up here.
All right, Katrina.
Thanks. Well, Brian sets up. Good evening, members of the town council. It is wonderful to be back here in front of you this year to present the board of education's budget for the 2022, 23 school year. This year continues to be a unique and extraordinary time for our schools and our students. New Canaan, as you know, has faced many challenges over the past three years and largely in our schools where uh, in-person learning, strong academic progress, health and safety, and the social emotional wellbeing of our students have been prioritized and supported through the courage and unwavering commitment of our administration, our principals, our teachers and our staff. As a town, we should feel really proud of how we rallied around our students and prioritize education throughout the pandemic. And as a member and chair of our board of education, I'm really proud of our schools and the results that Dr. Letzey will share with you this evening. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the entire system that made all of these efforts possible. Dr. Letzey's leadership, along with his administrative team, have led focus on doing what is best for our kids since day one, which is almost exactly to the day two years ago tonight. And three school years ago, if you can believe it, on making decisions, staying flexible and adapting quickly to new information and leading with compassion for our students and our staff. Our unions continue to be strong partners and our teachers and staff, including our wonderful nurses, guidance counselors, food services staff, custodians, bus drivers and campus monitors have truly showed up for our students in every way possible, every day of these last two years. So our entire community, our town leadership, board of finance, and you all, the town council have lent your time, expertise and funding to make it all possible. Finally, our students, our youngest citizens, they've been awesome. And they've really inspired us to keep going and all in all, they continue to thrive with optimism, resilience, flexibility and reminding us that the future is really bright. So this townwide commitment, I'll say, has made a significant and lasting impact on our students. And it reminds us all that education is truly the core of our town. So we know that as we move forward, we continue to face many challenges as we educate against the backdrop of pandemic, war, politically divided nation and a mental health crisis. So it's imperative that we remain steadily focused on providing this world-class education. And that focus has continued us as a whole, just think about how to stay ahead, be innovative, support our students, staff, our schools appropriately and continually go beyond the needs and demands of more traditional years of the past. Now, in doing so, the board of education takes seriously its responsibility to forecast its operating budget carefully and to budget appropriately. And the BOE is an agent of the state of Connecticut, cannot knowingly overspend its budget. So the process that has led us here to you this evening has been very thorough. We've discussed embedded all the areas of budget and confident that it will continue to serve our students and town well, while recognizing opportunities to reduce spending where possible. This budget that you'll hear about shortly was unanimously approved by our board of education, then unanimously approved by the board of selectmen, as well as the board of finance last week, following some discussion and an agreement to shift the approach and timing for funding our internal services fund. So on the operating side, you'll see that we proposed a very modest increase, well within town guidance. Our per people spending remains lower across the ERG and we continue to maintain excellent standings in the state and in the nation. We offer a wide breadth of co-curricular programs and athletics, offering students an outlet to pursue their passions and interests. We continually look for opportunities to reduce spending and outsource services in favor of in-sourcing key skills to build expertise to help our students excel and in our buildings to support our building maintenance needs. So our board has once again prioritized investment in changing school schedules to support additional sleep for adolescent students, while also shifting our elementary schools onto a common schedule. The decision reached by the BOE to modify school start times offers significant sleep benefits, while also carefully considers the impacts of such changes on our schools, students, families and the broader community. We are confident that with a fully funded budget, the schedule will be implemented this fall. Lastly, thank you all for your continued dedication and service to our town and for your time this evening with us. We are grateful, as we've heard tonight from many, for the strong partnership, the collaboration and the cooperation between our town boards. I can say with certainty that the students benefit greatly from the, the collective efforts. And a special thank you to Tom and Rita for serving as our liaisons this year. I know you've invested a lot of time getting up to speed on the budget. So thank you to both of you. So now with that, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Letzey, and our director of finance operations.
Brian, before, before you, I just wanna, Katrina, if you could just introduce, I see some board members here tonight. So I wanna acknowledge that there is, again, where I'm sitting, I can see Hugo and, and Phil and maybe Eric back there.
Erica Shvedal, Hugo Alves and Phil Hogan.
Thank you guys for coming.
All three new board members. So.
Yeah, Brandon.
Their first budget season. And I know Brendan, I saw Brendan and Penny, Brendan Hayes and Penny are on.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for all your work, guys. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, it being the Ides of March, I was thinking about starting Friends Romans Countrymen, but then I, I remembered how that story ended and thought, I thought better of it. So I think we'll, uh, instead I'll say, um, first, thank you for the questions that we've received in advance. I thought that what we would do is tonight, work through our presentation and use those questions as a springboard for our next meeting. Cause I know that, uh, you know, I know you're a little tight on time. So I really struggled with, do I just talk faster or do I take some things out? So I will do both. I have done both. Um, but certainly we welcome the dialogue and back and forth too. Because, uh, as we develop this budget and do this work, we do it on behalf of all folks in New Canaan. It's our students, teachers, certainly are top of mind, but so is every community member and everybody that we, we work for and with. So glad to, um, answer any questions, engage in any dialogue, uh, but I promise to move swiftly and, uh, skip where we can and get to the meat of it. But.
So I think, I think the way we'll do it tonight is we will have you present and then, you know, we have our questions. So we're gonna save the questions for our next meeting. So, you know, you've got the floor for an hour and, you know, we'll, I don't think we're gonna ask any questions tonight, but, uh, we'll have some for you next time we meet. So.
I will tell you what the over under is on the hour. But I'm gonna do my best. I was just kidding. But, you know, regardless of the, uh, the time, we always have enough time to say thank you. And I first, I wanna start by saying thank you to Katrina, our board of ed chair. Um, her strength and courage and fortitude throughout not just, um, the pandemic, but really as board chair, regardless of what's come, has helped us to keep our center and to keep, keep us doing the work that we've been doing. We're all very grateful for, for everything that she's done for us. Well, I thank all of our board members as well. You know, this, these have been challenging times. It's always challenging. A very wise person said to me once, don't expect things to ever slow down, just expect them to change. And boy, was she right. I mean, especially these last few years, they've changed and been very challenging, but we've had the right team from the start. And certainly sitting next to me, Dr. Keating is our director of finance operations, our cabinet, Dr. Crenzi, Mr. Tesber, Ms. Pianca, and certainly Tracy Haberman, our budget director. Also a quick thanks, and I saw a number of our building principals and administrators on the Zoom. Hopefully they're comfortable wearing their slippers and, uh, but I'm, I'm grateful that they've tuned in because they can watch this and get to bed early because their, their days still start very, very early. And they'll start a little later next year as, uh, as we'll talk about in a bit. But I'm very, very proud of the work that we, we do here. We're going to, that our time would be best spent just talking a little bit about the accomplishments. Sort of the, what's the return on the investment that we're talking about here? Um, and then we'll get into the numbers and some of the initiatives and, and our approach. But the, the work that we do every day, um, I think is the most important work on the planet. And we, as a school community, approach that work, our work in that spirit each and every day. The budget process itself, um, again, speeding up, uh, we are, I'm proud to say we're towards the, in the last sort of tranche of meetings here with the town council. And then of course it does go back to the board of finance one last time for them to set the mill rate and finalize the, you know, the funding structure. But the, as we go through this process, you know, it really begins in October, mid-October for us internally. And then what we've sketched out here is the external process, you know, the public process with, uh, the board of ed, the board of selectmen, the board of finance and now with you, the town council. And the reason it's just, I think, important to share that is the, the budget itself is the product of all of these inputs and all of these conversations and feedback. I present to our PTCs, both at the elementary level, the middle and the high school levels. They, um, it's a usually an interactive dialogue that we have together about the budget. We get together in December with the board of ed and a budget workshop where we're talking ideas, we're talking concepts. We're not really put rolling numbers and percentages out because one of the things I think that makes us great is the quality of the idea on behalf of children is our primary consideration as we develop our budget, as we make our decisions and we do our work. And that has benefited our students through the years. So the, the compass we use as we build our budget is our district goals. And we have been consistent with our district goals, as many of you know, through the years. These are sort of five overarching goals that hit on the core work and processes that we do. Goal number one is teaching and learning. I'm sorry, goal number one is focused on student learning. Goal number two is on communication. Three is on exemplary instructional practice. Four is on, uh, school climate and safety. And then five is about responsible stewardship. Now, within these goals, there are multiple objectives, uh, action steps that we take annually. The goals are the, the larger umbrella and then underneath are the, um, the ways that we operationalize our efforts to improve in each of these, these domains. And we're held accountable to these, but annually by each other, by our board of education. With the presentations that we give to the board of ed, uh, throughout the course of the year, really are guided by what the, the objectives of these goals. In the spring, we, we revise and look at them and sort of, um, change where we need to. Often they're iterative, so we'll be somewhere on a continuum of the work. As an administrative team, we bring that to the board early in the summer. The board discusses and, and, um, revises and suggests edits and then ultimately approves. And then it gets fed back into our administrative team. And we do our revisions sort of top down, bottom up as we do our budget work. You know, with our teachers, with our administrators, our building leaders and program managers in order to be sure that we are continuing to move, uh, in an aligned way through the work. Now, one of the things, one of our responsibilities, uh, as we do this work, and I think Todd articulated this extremely well, is this balance between excellence and efficiency. You know, we consider ourselves uncompromising in our commitment to excellence across the system and unrelenting in our pursuit of efficiency. And so we balance those things. And that's where this, you'll, we'll be talking about with our budget and the approach that we take and the things that we do. Uh, and this is a, a balance that is a challenge to strike. But we are always looking for efficiencies, especially in our operations. Cause we, we know that when we can save money in those things, whether it's electricity, whatever, whatever it might be, there's, it's, it protects and supports the core of our work, which is the interaction that occurs in the classroom between the students, the teachers and content each and every day. This is the fastest I've ever done this. I'm not even gonna stop for a breath. But before we move forward into, um, some other, it's important just to take a brief moment. And I'll highlight brief, but just to consider how we, where we are, what we've done to get to where we are. We started, as we built the budget and started thinking about even this conversation, we thought about that's the, the impact of the pandemic. It exists. It was, um, very disruptive to schools, to all of us in our lives. So we started thinking about the impact on children and we, and families realized that for our, uh, third grade students this year, the last uninterrupted year they had was in kindergarten. Kindergarten for second grade, that all they'd known has been the world in the pandemic in our schools. Only our seniors in high school can remember a year in high school that wasn't impacted by the pandemic. So you start to really think about, right? So I have a, a daughter who's a junior in college. Her entire college experience has been impacted by the pandemic, right? So we think about that and the, one of the things we're incredibly proud of, I mentioned before that we think the work we do in schools is the most important work on the planet. We didn't allow ourselves to become defined by this. Instead, we, uh, focused on creating new experiences for students, new opportunities for them. We, we weren't gonna settle for a pale replica of what they would have had without it. But instead we found ways to celebrate and to make it positive with things like the graduation parade, the, um, the car parades at the schools for teachers, the working with the, uh, EOC to create the, uh, the birthday parades that the police, fire and others did. You know, partnering with them to help to, so get those dates and that information, uh, whatever we could do, right? And we also helped out in ways that, um, were pretty unique, I think. So for instance, we, we in-source our food service. So in the beginning of the pandemic, when food scarcity was, was a real issue for many, many people, we activated our supply chains through our food service to bring in groceries. And then town volunteers and school volunteers worked to pack those up and to, to deliver them to seniors in town. And we did that multiple times over the course of a couple of months to make sure that the community wasn't, you know, suffering from some of these things that were going on. We worked together with the EOC and others to, to support in every way we can. You know, it was sort of, it was a time where there were no lanes. We were all just together. We were all just together and working hard to figure these things out. And we're, and just even today, we're talking briefly about our PTCs activating to to buy gift cards at for grocery stores, for food, for families, and we helped to distribute those to families in need throughout. I mean, there's, there's just so many stories in so many ways. So we the language that we use is generatively co-created the the reality of the experience that we're all living in. We didn't settle for what was being handed to us, but we created something new and supported each other. We're incredibly proud of that. What we did in our schools specifically, and this is going into next, last year now specifically, you know, when we brought our students back, we looked at, we focused on four different areas. One was the learning environment itself. We focused a lot on outdoor learning opportunities. We looked at ventilation and improving ventilation, you know, and took specific steps in order to keep our classroom doors open and our schools safe for kids and family. We, of course, focused on contact tracing and quarantining over 2,200 of those last year. We ran testing clinics with the Health Department. Over 16 large-scale testing events that we ran, we ran vaccination clinics with the Health Department in partnership together, 15 of those. And as a result, very, very high vaccination rates with our student, with our staff, both teacher certified not, and with our students and helping our students to get get vaccinated as well. So the results of all of those efforts, as we worked through them, we were one of the very few school districts statewide and nationally that didn't experience a single unexpected closure last year. So that not one single day did some of the kids wake up, families wake up and say, you know, my school's closed today because of COVID. That's where, that could only have happened with the the team and the confidence and the trust throughout the district. And just so grateful for the commitment of everybody to make that happen. We created a new system called Hybrid Plus in our high school. Because, you know, the hybrid system was 50/50, 50% of kids home, 50% of kids in school. And we had kept going longer at the high school than anywhere, because this is before vaccines and other things were available. But we saw that it was a real grind on kids. So we went back to the drawing board, created a new system where instead of having it 50/50, it was 75/25, 75% in the building, 25% home, and rotating out every couple of days. So kids got to all see each other, and it made a big difference. And also, as a result, all five of our schools had the majority of their days in prison. So we'll get to the, so it's kind of the outcome from last year and all that in a moment. But all of that, I just want to take a brief moment to, again, thank the Board of Ed, thank the administrative team, the teachers, custodians, the bus drivers, everybody. Because as you know, this is a very, education is a people business. And if any one of those functions failed, the schools would have had to close. And we were able to hold it together and keep it going. And in part, I also want to, special thanks to the Board of Finance and Town Council here for helping us to plan ahead. You know, we really planned ahead prior to the start of the last school year by doing things like bringing in building substitutes who are certified, who could teach other things like that, that really helped us to keep the operation going. We are still working hard to keep the communications flowing around all this. This is the dashboard as of today. We keep a dashboard up on our website, the charting our course, which is a microsite that we created. And that's where we keep all of our communications and communications from the Department of Public Health, the State Department of Ed, and others as a way to put the information out there. So when people want to know, they have a place to go versus, you know, pushing information out where you see it, but then when, when people meet it, it's not there. So we really took that page, actually, out of Higher Ed's book, because that's what colleges were doing right out of the gate, was creating these these sort of microsites. So we did the same thing, and it's worked very well. So the focus is on continuing to move forward, and and that's what we've been doing. And we've been seeing some really positive trends, and the Board of Ed thinks about this and talks about it, works on it regularly. But between the sort of the heavy Omicron wave in January, and then it tailed off in February, and now we're seeing seeing positive trends across the board. So working hard to keep it that way. Again, balancing the excellence, and we'll get to the efficiency in a minute. Just briefly, our athletics program continues to be amongst the very best in the state and the region. And I just want to give a quick shout out to our girls' ice hockey team, who in triple overtime last week, one of the the best, best games you're ever going to see, won the state championship. Fantastic. And our boys' ice hockey, who continue to play and are in the semis, I think, is it tomorrow night? I think, yeah, tomorrow night. The important to note here, I think, both the team.
We also be, you didn't say we'd be Darien, but you know.
I like to end on that before I check. Yeah, I'm going there. I like the individual accomplishments, like golf and cross country, and our team accomplishments. And certainly, the biggest team, our football team, and our victory in the in the Turkey Bowl this past year, and semifinalists in the state. But the, it's always good to win the Turkey Bowl, and it's even better when you win it at home. And, you know, in athletics, at the high school, we've got about 70% or so of our students are engaged in one or more sport, on one or more teams, which I think is fantastic. Too many awards here to read in the arts, but again, this is, we've just recently been talking about sort of from Sparta to Athens, right? We have a well-rounded program for all of our students, and there's quite a bit of overlap, actually, with athletes who are in the plays and, you know, those things and playing music, playing instruments, which is also, you know, it's great to see and speaks to the opportunities that our students are given. Do want to give a quick plug to The Little Mermaid this weekend at the high school. Last time we did a big Disney production at the high school, it was sold out a week plus in advance. So if anyone's interested in going, get your tickets now, and you won't be disappointed. It's going to be a wonderful show. The, but again, our visual and performing arts program continues to be amongst amongst the very best. We also focus hard on providing opportunities for our kids. You know, this, this is not all, but these are some of the clubs and activities that students have available to them at high school. Everything from, you know, a beekeeping club, where a couple of students wanted to learn how to do it, they went to a teacher and asked him, and he didn't know how to do it. So they learned together how to do it, and now they're keeping bees. To things like women in the workforce Wednesdays, to, you know, Quidditch Club that was there, that would, kids would get together, make up their own rules after school once a week and play Quidditch in the cafeteria. I watched it once, didn't understand it, and never saw it again. But the, they did, they understood it. So it was great. And that's the point, student-centered, student-centered work, investments in kids, and, you know, working to ensure that every student is connected to school, not just through the classroom, but in one or more ways beyond. And it's another hallmark of a world-class educational system. The, certainly, we can't talk about outcomes without spending a little bit of time talking about the assessments that our students take annually. At the K, not K, at grades three through eight, they take the smarter balanced assessment. And then in the high school, they take the SAT in their junior year. The, it was suspended in 2020. They didn't give the assessment because all the schools had closed down. And then we did reassess them in 21. So we look in our DURG, and we talk about the demographic reference group, DURG, which are the schools that are listed here. We're in DURG A, which is the the highest. And generally, if you're, you know, performing at or near the top in DURG A, you're generally, you're performing at or near the top statewide as well. So when we aggregate the scores across the board for grades three through eight in the math and language arts, which are the two subject areas that are assessed, we are, we were tops in both across our DURG and across the state. We can break that down a little bit and look across each of the individual grades. So here's the test in the English Language Arts. And as you look across, you'll see that we are number one in the DURG in all grades except eighth grade, which is a 0.7% difference. And I think that what, one of the things that's very telling here, again, we worked very, very hard to bring our kids back. We started bringing our elementary students back in September last year and did it a grade at a time as we worked up. And then we get, got to the high school, started 12th grade.
That might be my son, by the way.
What's second?
My, my son's probably dragging it down.
I doubt that. The, but we worked very, very hard to bring our kids back. And so, and everybody worked very hard. And it's not to say they didn't. But there are many systems, as you'll see, that have the stars because they were in hybrid majority of the time, right? So you can see some of some of the impact that that likely had on some of their student learning and their assessment. And assessments are important for a couple of reasons. Again, it's a test that's given over the course of a couple of days. So it's not everything to all people. But it is based on standards, and those standards are the, are the, the same standards that we base our curriculum work off. So there is feedback on the success of us delivering our program and meeting these standards with our students, and then, you know, the assessment reflecting that. So there is an alignment between the test, our curriculum, our instructional practices, and our student outcomes. So in that way, and that's Dr. Krenzi, the core of her work, you know, it reflects very well on the work that we've been doing. The same over in mathematics, if we look again across from grades three through eight, and again, you see many of the districts were in hybrid, and in the number of those grade levels for the majority of the year, which is the ones with the star. Again, we are at the top of the DURG in all but one grade, and in the one that we're not, we're getting extremely close. So, let me quickly, the, another way to look at this is to look at the the trends over time for us individually, right? Not to compare across, but to take a look, how have our students been doing? So we're looking from 2016 on. You know, we look at the English Language Arts at the top and the mathematics at the bottom. We saw trends, you know, positive trends, and we saw that that was slowed. But we still see very positive results with our kids. And we're working to, you know, again, reclaim that momentum. And it would be unrealistic to think that there'd be no impact, given the the closure in 2020, the work that had to occur, you know, all remotely during that time. Not testing in in 2020 meant that we had a number of students who'd never taken the test before, the format was different, you know, it's, it's an online test, they didn't have that practice. So there's some, some different variables that we've been discussing and working through. But I think we should all be very proud of the fact that our students really did maintain their performance, you know, as we look across. The, I mentioned that the high school's assessment is the junior year SAT. And in here is what also our students performed very well. They were second in the DURG in English Language Arts by three, you know, just three points, and then mathematics at the top. Now, high school is probably the most complex environment for kids, of course, and just talking about one test given in one day doesn't quite do it. The, so years ago, we began this table, and it looked a lot better a few years ago. It's gotten very cluttered now as we keep adding. But I think it's important just to highlight a couple of things. The, this speaks to some important data points that we trend out at the high school when we're looking at sort of progress and goals and focus. A couple of them, including our the AP courses. And there were some questions I know we'll be talking about next, our next meeting around those. But really, if you go back to 2011, we had 17 AP courses. I just couldn't fit it on the chart. But as you trend that forward, so as we've gone forward, we've gone from 22 to 28 AP course offerings for students. And what that means is we've been expanding the program of offerings for students in an attempt to make sure that anyone who's interested in taking a course has an opportunity to do so. You, there's always a core curriculum with AP, where you have your AP Bio, AP Chem, AP US, AP Language, and Literature, you know, a couple of AP Calc. But then expanding beyond that, you get into things that are really more interest-based for kids. And so everything from AP Studio Art to AP Economics, Micro and Macro, AP Global, there's different things that you can do that can attract students in that maybe they're not the. Am I timed up?
Sorry.
I was just getting on a roll there. Just kidding. But no, they're not, maybe they're not the traditional, you know, AP student they might have found out years ago. But they have a strength in a different area that you give them an opportunity to try. So that's why that's important. And the results do speak for themselves in the AP participation numbers. So you go from 318 to 487. And you look at the number of AP scholars and those things. So that's a way that we've been working to expand the program and the opportunities for kids. Again, other, other data points, always glad to talk about any of them. But what we see is a positive trend as we look, look across these last seven years. The, some of them, you know, graduation rate, you'd always expect to be 98, 99, 100%, but the, you know, between SAT scores and other things. So it just, it shows that positive trend. As a result of all of this, and all of, and much more that we don't have time to talk about, we've gotten some feedback. I'm not a huge fan of rankings because it's generally, they look at a very narrow metric to make that decision. And even like a US News World Reports and some others, typically what they'll do is say that they use a broader system, but they use that broader system to determine eligibility to be ranked, and then use one, one or two narrow metrics to actually do the ranking. Niche is a little bit different. It was actually started by a couple of graduates from Carnegie Mellon. And their initial work was to create a system where people could learn about communities as they're deciding about where they want to buy a home, where they want to raise their families. And then it expanded into, into looking at schools and some other, other types of rankings. They're, they use more, a more comprehensive approach. They use feedback from parents and students and teachers from the website and from other things. They use a number of different things that, to me at least, make it a little bit more meaningful to discuss. That, and they also ranked us the number one school district in Connecticut. But more of the first stuff. If you take a look, we've done quite well. And I think, again, it's just a compliment to everyone involved across the, across the board. Statewide, you know, number one best district in Connecticut, you see the school rankings. We've mentioned before, even at the beginning, you know, number one best places to teach and number one teachers. Very, to me, incredibly powerful. You see safest and whatever. But then when you go to the national rankings, I think that's really very humbling. You know, when you think about being ranked number 26 out of 10,772 school districts, you know, for number 41 out of 11,600 in our best teachers. 54 out of 11,252 best places to teach, really humbling metrics that really, again, encourage us and show us that, you know, our work is yielding dividends on behalf of our children. So, but we're proud of that. But, you know, our focus on excellence was only half the equation, right? I also mentioned that we're relentless in our pursuit of efficiency. So these numbers come straight from the state's website. These are the figures that they use to determine their per pupil expenditures when they calculate excess cost reimbursement, right? So there's a normalized input that goes into this, that creates these figures, which is why we use it, because the the state, obviously, when they're doing this calculation, they go to great pains to to normalize this across all of the districts because they are giving money back to districts as a result of these calculations. If you spend four and a half times above your per pupil, as it's calculated here, then you're eligible for excess cost reimbursement to a percentage for special, for special education. So there's a function for these numbers, which is why we use this, you know, this source. So as we looked across, you know, we found that this year, going back last year, 2021, across the 160 some odd districts in the state, we ranked 54th in our per pupil expenditure. And you can see, again, here's the DURG, and we put in a couple of, we put in Greenwich as well. And Reading, Region Nine, and Easton are sort of separated out because Easton, the Reading are the elementary district. And Joel Barlow High School is Region Nine, which is sort of its own standalone there, which is how the state does it. So we do it the same way. Again, we don't, we don't calculate these numbers. We literally take them off of the, the table at the website that you see below you. The, I was talking a little bit, talked about the grand list, right? And so the state uses the ANGLIC, which is the adjusted equalized net grand list per capita. And you see that we rank second in the state for the ANGLIC. So second in the state for what we would call the ability to pay. And then 54th in the state in what you would call the need to pay or expense, right? So just for some points of reference, you know, if we went with the average of the DURG, if we just sort of average these numbers and make, and put our per pupil at that level, it, our budget would be over $6.5 million more than it was for this current year, for the 2021. If we went to the same as our neighbor, who's not to be named, who we played in the Turkey Bowl, we'd be about $4 million, we'd be about $4 million higher. Right? So again, it's standardized inputs on this. So, you know, it's, I think it's, it's, it's a metric. And there are others. And one of the questions was about what if we include debt into it, all of that. And we're looking to see if there's, if the state does that somewhere. And if they don't, then probably not going to be comfortable bringing numbers forward because we don't, we don't make this up, right? We're using numbers that are normalized based on formulas and inputs that come from the various communities. But we'll, we'll get to that next week. But we're proud of this, and I think that it speaks to the efficiency and the work that we do to to manage our costs. And, you know, some of the ways that we do that is, over the years, we've spent quite a bit of time and energy to in-source select functions that have led to cost savings. For instance, our, our print shop, you know, we have a print, we, as a district with about 4,200 kids, you know, with 700 plus adults, there's a lot of printing that happens. I'd love to say that we, we're all electronic now, it just isn't the way. So the, the tens and hundreds of thousands of pages, we, we've had a print shop here for years. That contract came due, Joanne and her team worked and evaluated it, and we made the decision that we'd be better off bringing it in-house and having an in-house employee running that. And as a result, we've saved $150,000, $200,000 annually. You know, as Todd said before, that's sort of money off the board that we save every year that we, since we've made that decision. It also improves the service, you know, because of the folks work directly for us and we're able to do that. Our maintenance, you know, we have in-sourced skilled maintenance crew who can do the level one work in HVAC and plumbing and carpentry and electrical, that that kind of work. They can, something goes wrong with their boilers, they can co, they can fix those things, they can do. They can do that, that level one repair work instead of having to outsource that. What that does is makes the response time quicker, makes helps us to make sure that we stay up. You know, in the middle of the winter, if you have boilers down, you're not running school, right? There's nothing you can do. We've got the team here, they can get over to, and it actually happened once or twice at one of our elementaries this year, where the team had to get there to restart the boiler, fix it, get it going. Nobody was any the wiser because they got it going before the school day started. We got things warmer and and things were working. That but what it also does is they don't want to have to fix it again. So they do a good job, you know, when they come over to fix it. They they don't want to, you know, go back. Whereas when you're outsourcing this, some they might be coming back a couple of times to, oh, this this broke, now it's that, now it's this. And it's, you know, it's all ball bearings these days. So just better off doing this work in-house. The taking the same approach in our special ed department. Where we brought in skilled services, our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, BCBAs, others. So that they lowers costs, but it also improves service because they create and form the relationships with families and students. And they work with children over time. Again, instead of outsourcing that, sending kids somewhere else to get the services, we can do it in-house. And, you know, we, this is something that we can easily take for granted because it's such a longstanding thing that we have here. But our special education fleet of vehicles has, it saves us enormous amounts of money annually. When I talk to my colleagues, they are, they're talking about spending over a hundred thousand dollars a year per child for just transportation, let alone the other costs that come along with tuition and other things like that for for transporting students out of the district. We have our in-house fleet that not only can do that, but does other things throughout the course of the day. Plus, we repurpose our drivers when they're not driving, they're in our building supervising, helping out, delivering things across the district. Sometimes they're delivering what happens in the print shop, you know, all those kinds of things. So that we find the synergies and the opportunities to use them. And again, they, it's the same driver and the same van for a long period of time with the child and families, they get to know each other. You know, and that also helps our kids. So all of that, I think, is very important. The another way that we've been working hard to save money has been about sort of doing well and doing good. Looking at green solutions that are good for the planet and that are good for our budget. So we mentioned before, we've got natural gas at four of our five buildings. We have propane, we went early and I'm very proud of this, very successfully transitioned our bus fleet over to be a hundred percent propane. It saves a little bit of money. There's almost no exhaust whatsoever, no smell, you know, that diesel smell. It start, the buses start regardless of the temperature because propane is under pressure. So you can get down to negative forty five, forty seven degrees before you have to worry about it. Where with diesel, you know, if it got below a certain temperature, you'd have to run the buses through the night. The engines themselves are showing less wear. You know, they're still in good shape because it burns so much cleaner than diesel does. So we made that move. It's saving us money, it's good for the environment, it's good for the community, nobody's behind a bus anymore where they get that plume of diesel smoke when the bus takes off. We've also, also with propane, because we're not going to get natural gas out to West. So we're looking at and planning to install propane at West this summer for the building heat. And that will, again, help us maintain costs a little bit, bring those down. It's much better than running on on diesel fuel, on oil. The solar work that we've been doing, South was first, great success. Southeast and West are completed. Saks is very near completion. And we're planning right now for the high school and the bids were just open for the high school project just today. Was it today? Yes, right, yes, correct. The numbers are looking good there, so we're looking to vet the folks who made those bids. So looking to implement solar as part of the energy portfolio and helps to bring down costs. Technology, you know, we look at load balancing, as you can imagine, when schools, so when a school sort of starts in the morning, all the lights and the energy, everything sort of comes on all at once. And that can cause a spike in demand, which then can ratchet up your rates that you're paying for for power. So what what we've done in a technology solution is work to sort of turn some things off while other things are turning on to manage the load. So you don't have that spike, so you don't have the ratchet charges so that you can save money on your electricity that way. It's much more technical than I've just described it, but if you want more, Joanne's the expert. We've been working on cogeneration where we're actually burning natural gas to turn a generator turbine to produce electricity over at Saks, and we're looking at doing that at the high school as well. Again, it's a portfolio type of approach. And, you know, just one more thing, and then there's many, many more we can talk about. But the we've been replacing the lighting across all of the buildings. Now, we've got close to a million square feet. And so, you know, when we do it, those in our own home, you know, you might switch out your your incandescent lights for LED. You might save a couple of, a couple cents a month, a couple of dollars, whatever it is, feel good about it. When we do it, we can save a quarter million dollars. You know, it's just the, it's the scale at which we operate, you know, with a million square feet and the lighting requirements that we have. So we've been doing that work. We do the elementaries two years ago, we've been doing the high school and the middle school now. And again, it's a way that we are saving some money. So as we, as we move into the budget itself and our requests going forward, the a couple of things that to focus on or kind of high level. What we've done is we've built this budget and put it together. We balance the community's expectations of excellence with our long-term focus on efficiency. And working to continue to maintain our world-class educational experience for all students. You'll see we're investing in some high-leverage continuous improvement initiatives. The it's, it certainly supports our curricular instructional assessment practices across the board. There Katrina mentioned our school, our healthier school start time initiative. Certainly, we've got to continue to provide for our safety and security across the board in all of our schools. And we've really taken a concerted effort to take a look at some of our students with the greatest need and identify opportunities that are low-cost, high-leverage to to help those students and to continue to accelerate their learning. So one of the things that we talked about a little bit, and this looks even more cluttered if you're used to seeing this slide than usual. And one of the reasons is we've added a year back because just like we said in the beginning, the it's been three years of disruption from COVID. Really doing an annual year-to-year percentage comparison isn't real, those aren't real numbers. Because if you go back, you know, when you've been impacted by COVID, you've got programs that you've canceled that you wouldn't imagine not running when you're able to run them. For instance, a couple of years ago, we didn't have a football team. And so it would show as a budgetary increase when we put our football team back, but it's only because you didn't spend it that year before. So what we've, we thought about this a bit and said, you know, better off to trend it back to the eighteen nineteen school year. So at least we can have some meaningful comparisons. The headline is always sort of the year-to-year, and we get that and understand it. But just for, you know, for conversation and just for analysis, you know, with each of the boards, we just thought that was an important perspective. So and we'll get to that, a couple of those comparisons in a moment. But as we look briefly, I just want to share, there's a couple of columns that you'll see for, there's, you'll see the twenty two project, budget. And then you'll see the twenty two projected and then the twenty three proposed. And as you can imagine and you know, a budget is is an itemized estimate based on our knowledge and experience and predictions. And, you know, I think we do a really very good job at it, but it's still an itemized estimate of anticipated costs. So we're, we're building this budget now for the twenty two, twenty three school year. But until we're in that school year, the other unanticipated costs, other things can happen that we don't know. So Dr. Keating and her team start in November and work through November to the end of the calendar year in December to create the projections. And that's ba- based on that, the trend since July one. It's based, of course, on our experiences and what we know and how we've managed budgets through the years. We're able to encumber quite a bit, so our, most of our salaries we can encumber. Because they are predictable with their contracted people for the most part. Other things like we can look back historically and anticipate what overtime costs may be and things like that. So we work very closely and carefully through to develop those projections where we anticipate ending the the school year, this fiscal year. And then we actually build a budget and compare against those projections. Because it it's less reliable to compare budget to budget. Instead, we're trying to get as close to actuals as we can, although we're in the midst of the year. So we don't have the actuals until we truly close. So that's, that's where those comparisons lie. And that's why we use the proposed and the projected instead of comparing the proposed to the budget number itself. The, there's one adjustment here that was mentioned briefly. And the again, glad to go as much detail into it as you want, but we don't need to. But that's to transfer, so you'll see that the transfer start-in-time funds to non-lapsing Internal Services Fund, the four sixty three, three thirty seven. As you'll recall, back a year ago, when we approved the budget, we had said to the Board of Finance, South Council others, we won't spend that money on anything other than changing school start times. And we didn't change our school start times this year. So in consultation with the Board of Finance, the recommendation was to take that money and to use it to partially offset the deposit into the Internal Services Fund for next year. So that's that four sixty three, three thirty seven will be transferred into the Internal Services Fund. And then the remainder of whatever the risk corridor is going to be, based upon the aggregate. I know I'm using a lot of terms here. The aggregate stop-loss number that we get from our vendor in May determines the corridor because that's our twenty percent risk above a hundred percent of anticipated claims. Once we know what that is, we'll be going back to the Board of Finance with the number. And we anticipate in August that that'll be sort of trued up as as Todd was talking about. And that would be coming from the general fund. So they're going to allocate out of the general fund the balance of what we anticipate. And if it's more than that, a little more, and if it's less than that, they won't have to transfer as much over. And we do anticipate before we come back that we'll be able to revise our projections now that we've got a couple more months claims. So we're asking our insurance consultant, Joe, to do that for us. And if there's something to be saved, we will take it, you know, we'll let you know and take it right off the top. So that does bring the number down just a little bit with those changes. It brings the employee benefits line down by one point three million. And so the percent increase shifts to seven point three five percent overall. And you'll see that written on the bottom there. But this, you know, what we generally do is sort of put the Board of Ed budget together and then work through the process without going through and republishing each time. So we, I put it as a note down there at the bottom. So there are, there are really three big drivers in the budget. I mean, this is pretty much at a high level, we're looking at the Internal Services Fund deposit, which is three point nine million. Which if that was all that was happening, it would be a four point two four percent increase. We're looking at the change in school start time, which is just a little bit over a million dollars, which is one point one four percent. And then everything else altogether is one point nine six. So that's, that's how we get to the seven, three, four. Of course, we're going to go deeper than that. I mentioned the trends. Here's a couple of just points of comparison as we look at it. The the all-in trend for us annually from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, if we look for it, looking trend that forward. Prior to that, one point three million dollar reduction, so using that, the all-in number is a two point eight nine. That's with the ISF and the the operating budget all all combined. If we pull out the ISF deposit and trend that since eighteen nineteen, we're looking about at an eight point six percent annual annual trend, which is running pretty close to where the industry is when we look at trend in in insurance. When we look at the budget without those numbers in, so we pull out the ISF and do it all in, that's the upper right. We're looking at a two point four seven percent annual trend if we've come from two thousand and eighteen, nineteen and move it forward. In our conversations with the Board of Finance, we were talking about a two seven, sort of as a, as a reasonable target, as a trend since the eighteen nineteen. So that's what that is there. And it shows that it's, if we had been trending at two seven, we'd be, you know, about nine hundred thousand dollars or so higher than we are today on the budget. So I think that it shows some, some good stewardship of the of the work that we've been doing. The distribution, so by state regulation and rules, it's broken down by objects, those eight objects that we saw on that first page, salary and benefits and those things. So when we look at it, this is the the breakdown, eighty two percent is salaries and benefits. And then another ten percent is our purchase services. Purchase services are transportation, special ed outplacement costs, those are the big drivers there. So you're looking at ninety two percent just in those three objects there. And then you get into like property service, which is electric, electrical is about a million dollars. That's the biggest there contracted services. We've got some outsourced services still through special ed, things like that. But the big drivers certainly are those. Again, I, you know, without having made the the adjustment here, but just to show sort of where we we hover right around that two and a half or so, two point seven five, until we get to the ISF deposit and the need there. You see, actually, if we, if you're going across, so salaries are up, but contracted services are down year to year. Purchase services are down year to year, I mean, property services are down year, supplies are down year to year, equipment's down year to year. So we've really been working hard to manage within each of those objects as closely as we can. The the ISF, and again, I'm sorry to be going so quickly, but I don't think you mind. The ISF is, you know, wanted to trend the the deposits in. And again, this could be more of a conversation next meeting if you, if you like. Of course, we can go as deep as you want, but I know you're pressed tonight. But the wanted to show the funding sources for that for the Internal Services Fund. And if you start at the two thousand and twenty actual, you know, you're looking at just the three. You've got the operating budget deposit, and then you've got our employee contributions and the retiree contributions. You'll see the act, what happened with COVID. And the the drop-off in utilization in two thousand and twenty saved our district over two and a half million dollars, which is a wonderful, you know, result financially, certainly. In that, and that's part of the reason why you want to be a self-funded plan. So if we were fully insured, then those savings would have gone to the insurance company. But instead, we're able to to use those savings. So when you go into the two thousand and twenty two, you know, you see that the fund balance from past savings, the two point two million dollars there, helped to offset the operating budget deposit requirement into the Internal Services Fund. So what we do, our practice has been when there's savings there, we turn it back. And we want to do that because that we don't want to hold more in this fund than we need to. What it can do though is create a cliff, and that's what it did this year. Because we don't have that same savings to give back. We do it knowingly, and we had some good conversation a couple of years ago with the Board of Finance about should we take it over two years instead of taking it all at once? And, you know, the decision was if it's there, let's take it at once, knowing that we had this conversation and that this is going to happen. So that's where we are. So you'll see that in this proposed, that we still have the employee and the retiree contributions, the deposit from the operating. But this also reflects the fund balance from the unspent funds this year, that four sixty three. And then what's we anticipate to be needed, which is about that eight thirty six to come from the general fund, which we'll do as a transfer in August, once we have the actuals, because we're able to do that. The distribution across cost center. So we do it by object, but we also, we build by cost center, which you'll see in the budget book as you flip through, it's it's broken out this way. Just again, at a high level, you see the parity across Southeast and West. We work hard, those principals build their budgets together and they look at a per pupil expenditure number. And so they make sure that they're very closely aligned. Saks and the high school, around the same number of students, around the same costs. And then we break out, you know, break out the rest with athletics, VPA and the others. So this is sort of the distribution across the various cost centers that we have. Also, I mentioned before, education's a people business. So again, briefly, looking at the the breakdown of our staffing, what you see is that seventy one percent are the folks that are in the classroom, I mentioned before about the work of the core. So our teaching assistants, our teachers, that's the vast majority of our staff, almost three quarters. And then we look at, you know, each of the other areas. And so our staffing, so for instance, like, you know, our in-house transportation, we have that, most districts don't. We in-source our food service, we have that, most districts don't. You know, we in-source our campus monitors, we have that, most districts don't. There's other things that we've done where we've in-sourced to both improve the service and save us money. But it does result in in some additional FTEs sometimes. So I so I think that our FTEs certainly compare well across the board, but that's different. Each each district can be a little different in how they approach these things. And those are strategic decisions that we've made and have resulted, I think, in improved service and efficiency. The key driver is enrollment for our staffing because most are, again, the classroom folks. So we look back historically and it was mentioned a little bit about what's happened around capital expenditures. And so in some districts, they've, their enrollment has really dropped. And so they've made some changes in buildings and things. We haven't seen that. What we've seen actually is very consistent enrollment across the board for many years. And if we look forward, we continue to see consistent enrollment. You know, you can't put much stake in a ten-year projection, but to be at forty sixty nine and say that we're going to be at forty eighty nine, I don't think you get much more consistent than that, you know, as we go across. And it it may change a little here and there, but you can put, put some pretty fair stakes in the next three years. They're typically pretty accurate looking at that. The challenge is always the kindergarten enrollment and making those predictions. But going just a level deeper, looking at the different buildings and the levels, our K four, five, eight, nine, twelve, again, consistency is what we see. And this is the challenge, the it's the historical birth to kindergarten ratio. And again, without going deep into the weeds here, but at a high level, what the demographers look to do is they go back five years, they look at registered births in parents in New Canaan. And then they try to project forward what the kindergarten enrollment may be. What happens is we can have waves of in-migration. So people moving in with children that are born elsewhere and they don't get registered. So you create this ratio based on the number of births, which is the bottom line. And then the kindergarten enrollment, which is the top. Sometimes it's consistent, other times, like in two thousand and nineteen, we had that big jump in our kindergarten enrollment. You see, it was not forecast by the the birth rate. That was, that was steady, but this one year we had a big wave. So the point before about So the point before about folks moving into town, we are a little, a little concerned that there's folks that have moved in with younger children who were born elsewhere. That may be showing up at our school soon. But if that happens, then we'll be ready for it. Well, we'll adjust as we need. So the the big drivers, I'm so glad I didn't start it. You did start it at that time. Oh boy. I got three minutes. All right, no problem. So the
That's strict, so.
We, I went back and forth between starting a stopwatch or not. And then I just left my, my phone back there because I knew I would go over. But a couple of big drivers, and again, this is not our only time, so.
You haven't even had a drink of water. I've noticed that.
It takes time. The, we, the Internal Services Fund, we talked about that. The salary increases, which was mentioned before, yeah, it does tend to trend at about a 3% overall. And then we have a little bit, some turnover savings that we're able to capture based on requirements and things. So both of those are in here. Salary adjustments for employee groups that are negotiating and the non-represented folks. We've got a number of groups that are a couple of years in the rears for resolving their contracts, non-certified. And that's in part because of the pandemic and others. So that's, that's the number there. Grid progression, that's for our certified staff. So they, they move a year in the, in the grid, they move a year down each time. But if they earn extra degrees, they can also change lanes. And so they have to notify us in advance. Those are typically really accurate numbers. And that's the, the grid progression there. A couple of important initiatives. We are looking at implementing a Director of Innovation position. And we're doing that by reclassifying an existing staff member and moving her into this new role. So it's a wash on FTEs. There's an up because it's moving from a curricular position into an administrative position. The responsibilities are expanding significantly as a result. As a district, you know, and there's one slide a little bit later on it, but the, we're really, this is sort of the next iteration of our work around STEM. And it's, it's that shift. We've been working through STEM for the last seven, eight, nine years, 10 years. And now we're looking at this sort of the next, that next step in that evolution. And there's a, there is a capital component to it as well. But it's, it's an exciting initiative. We actually had a big meeting yesterday with some folks. I'll talk more about it in a bit. Special Literacy Academy. There are two positions here. One would be grant funded, one would be budget funded. The K-12 for a teacher of the visually impaired. It's, we have a number of six students who are visually impaired, six blind students that are going to be in the district next year. And there are other students with different levels of visual impairment. So having a teacher specializes in this will help those students day to day, help us to keep them in the district and to help these teachers build the expertise they need to, to deliver the program well to them. And then some enrollment driven changes, you know, we're looking at going down in fifth grade. So we've got a couple of, we're going down a little bit there, we're going up in a couple of other spots. But on balance, it's an increase of 55, which is, we have something called the Enrollment Variability Adjustment, which is we, that when we look at our elementary enrollment based on the projections, if we've got some that are right on the cusp of needing a new, a new section, then we will look to put one, we don't know where it's going to fall. And the opposite is true. If we have one that looks like it's going to go just low, we might take that one down. So sometimes the enrollment variability is up, sometimes it's down based on sort of where the numbers are falling, but on our class size guidelines. The Innovation Center that I mentioned, essentially the big picture on this is moving from engaged to empowered, where it's not about teaching students to find the one answer, but it's teaching them to think and problem solve and learn and work through the design process. And certainly glad to have more conversation about this, you know, next time and Dr. Kranti can join me and, and speak more. But the, you know, this is a, an initiative that it's one of our district goals and something that the, the board has supported and that we feel very strongly about for our kids. Similarly, that, again, teacher of the visually impaired, some of the, the skills that this teacher has that, you know, a general educator doesn't necessarily have that, that level of expertise and that depth. And the idea here is to bring somebody in to work directly with the kids and families, but also to work with the teachers. And some of these practices are just good practices across the board. So giving professional development to all teachers. And there's, there are lots of really creative things we can do here with, with a teacher like this. I was in a school once that had a similar program. And we did things like reverse mainstreaming where sighted students were sitting side by side with visually impaired students, learning to braille together, doing things like that. And in like that environment, the student who is visually impaired is teaching the sighted student how to do it. So it's like opportunities to do some really creative things with kids and programs there. The other is our, our literacy academy for our youngest learners. And the goal there is to, to help our youngest learners who are struggling readers using scientifically based approach to get them back on track and change that trajectory of their experiences through school. We have a, a pretty rare opportunity in that one of our, one of our staff is an Orton-Gillingham Fellow. That's the scientifically based research program that we'd be using. That's one of 100 nationally who, with that certification. So that person then can both train our staff and oversee this type of approach. And we'd look to do it in our elementary schools, again, for our youngest learners. So we're really looking K1, 2 to get them those skills early and get them back, you know, back on track. So lots of promise here. And again, and Bill Tesper, our Assistant Superintendent for Family People Services can speak to that in more detail. Just a couple of other non-salary budget drivers. We, we are anticipating a slight reduction in our outplacement costs. A couple of students have come back to the district and they're doing quite well and we're, we're thrilled with that. We are, we do have some new fees for the use of the YMCA pool, which is, as you know, pools are extremely expensive. So it's really, we've got a great partnership with the Y and we're doing, this is a, this is reflective of that partnership. Our healthier start times initiative, you know, the, the eight budgets, eight buses that we need to the increase in the, the transportation budget there. We mentioned before the savings in electricity. So we, that's a $118,000 reduction there. And we did negotiate our, our DOTCO contract, you know, our transportation contract, the yellow buses just this past year. And we settled on a 2% a year increase each of the next five years. And I'm thrilled that we got that done before the inflation number started coming out. Yeah. So we look, we're, we're in good shape there. And the highlights, you heard them. Again, I apologize for going so quickly, but I, I didn't think you'd mind. The, but our goal is again, about continue to deliver a program for all of our kids that's second to none and to do it as cost efficiently as possible. The couple of initiatives that you see here, you know, we do believe these are high leverage, high efficiency approaches. So, you know, the literacy academy can serve us 40, 50 kids a year. And if we can get those kids back, get them the skills they need at those ages, get their trajectory, you know, sort of improved throughout the rest of the school system. It helps them to remain and, and strengthen, you know, the skills and, and remain strong contributing members of our school community as they go through. The focus on healthier schools, school start times is something that the board, as you know, as we've been looking at for a very long time. We're excited to have direction here and to be able to improve on things for our kids and our families. And as you know, you know, part of the conversation has been about the childcare needs and the town and things like that. So the board has been working, we've all been working hard to meet those needs and fill those gaps. And we've been, again, great partners with the nature center, with the Y, with others too, to, to get those things going. So lots of really good things going on. Glad to take any, any questions on this.
I think Brian, tonight is, is presentation night and you're going to get a lot of questions from, from this group. So don't worry about that. Good. We, we really appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you very much. And I think we'll hold our questions until our next meeting.
Perfect.
And that way we can be prepared. And I think we're going to, we're going to get them to you as well in advance if we have them.
Yeah, we have some already. Yeah, we'll work through those and we'll get those back. And I know that there's the capital side of the budget too. Right. And so we can, if it works for you, glad to do capital and question, Q and A.
That's perfect. That's perfect. Thank you very much.
That was the quickest I could do. I'm trying.
Thank you for all your team.
Thank you all. And thank you for laughing at my Ides of March joke.
All right, next up we have the New Canaan Police Department, Chief Prolikowski. Anybody need a break? Are you guys okay? Okay. Keep on going.
Yes, I know.
Good job, though. Self-discipline.
Restrain.
I know.
This is always the hardest part of the presentation, the technical side of it. Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much. Hillary, you still out there? Hillary?
I'm here.
Okay, good.
That was the chief. That was the chief.
Of course, Chris Kazers. Thank you. We'll fix that. Chief, do you have your Zoom on? Albie, take notes back there about what we're doing here.
You mean feedback?
If anybody's actually tried to do this, everybody can relate to this. I mean, it's, it's not like, not the easiest thing in the world. Yeah.
First of all, thank you all for the time you spend making our town such a great place. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keeping it safe.
Chief, thank you to the department for keeping it safe. Fire department, tiger, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get there. Brian could have had like an extra five or six minutes.
Yeah.
Please don't let it get out.
Once we figure out the screen share issue, I'll give you a little snapshot of what we're going to talk about tonight. First, we're going to talk about animal control and the great work that our animal patrol person does for us. And give you a little snapshot about typical work that she does. Want me to come out again?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do want to thank Bob Mantia for filling in for Tucker. Those are some big shoes to fill, Bob. So we, we do appreciate it and we get the, get the learning curve. I told you, we learn together. I figured there's going to be some bumps in the road tonight. Here we go. Here we go. Thank you, Luke. And thank you, Josh. All right, ready? Ready to roll?
Is you're, you're running my presentation or? Okay, we'll make it easy. So I'm with you. Okay, so tonight we're going to talk about animal control first, then we're going to talk about your return on investment. Talk a little bit about highlights for 2021, some goals for 2022. Talk about capital, which is down 26.7%. We're going to talk about our vehicles, a little focus there. Operating budget is up 3.1%, largely due to salary increases and personnel costs. Talk about some benchmarking related to costs, staffing and overtime. And at the end of the presentation, we're going to talk about our townwide security initiatives that we're very confident they're going to make everybody feel a little more safe and secure in our parks and also in our center of town. So we're going to move through that. So that's what we try to build our budget every year, thoughtful and careful budgeting. And as you know, we always finish under budget. We're very careful about how we spend the town's money. And we try to run the police department like a business. We're very careful about it. Animal control. So 262 calls for service in 2021. Next slide. That's some of the calls that animal control deals with. It's a peacock. Some puppies.
Was he disturbing the peace?
It's a bobcat in somebody's yard. Bear.
Okay.
Of course, kitten. And a hawk. So all kinds of wildlife in New Canaan that both our animal control officer and or officers have to handle. So that's pretty incredible work that they do. And no capital request for 2023. And 110408 for FY23 operating. And that increase is largely due to onboarding a part-time animal control officer because our full-time animal control officer is retiring. So we don't believe that will continue the next fiscal year. So that's a temporary increase that allows transition seamlessly and get that person trained up to serve the town so well. Next slide. So now we'll talk about the police department. Return on investment. That's officers teaching a course at our Lapland Community Center to our older folks regarding fraud and some other things like that, which we're seeing all too much of. So officers add a coffee with a cop. We love to do those kinds of interactive meetings with the community. And I think the community loves that too. That's a grocery gathering at Acme. We do have a certain percentage of our residents that are needy and need food and need other things that most of us don't go without. So we like to help them out by gathering things like that and contributing to our food pantry. So that's part of the service aspect of what we do. That's a officer, Coughlin, who was our community impact officer, who was assigned to the center of town. And she's teaching a class to the newcomers. That's Special Olympics torch run. We're partnering there with Darian. And we'd love to get out there and help support our Special Olympians. It's a coat drive we did at our department. And once again, contributing those coats to needy people in our town that don't have a coat. And we love to do those kinds of things. That's a domestic violence table at the high school. Family disputes, 2021, we're 64. It's a pretty significant increase compared to 2020 and 2019. And that's usually good news that we're seeing more calls for service related to that because it's pretty constant. And lots of folks don't want to call for help. And when they call for help, we're, we're willing to help them. And not all of those calls relate, resulted in arrest. But they do result in help that we're ready to provide. And we have a dedicated domestic violence officer that interacts with all victims and people that need help. So that's something we like to do. It's like I always say, our violent crime in New Canaan is typically domestic violence, which is a bad thing, but it's a good thing related to our, our crime levels in town. And George, he retired after 54 years of service. We're wishing him well. And certainly we see his gap in our department because he left us, but kudos to him and congratulations to his retirement. It's a little snapshot of three years of arrests, motor vehicle stops, psychiatric problems. And we're seeing those continue to increase and the complexity of those calls is increasing as well. So that results in a lot of dedicated efforts by our officers. We have a community support team that's kind of like a crisis intervention team. Officers are trained on each shift and we'll talk about in a few live slides about that. Burglaries are down. Unfortunately, stolen vehicles are up substantially. We'll talk about that. And Larcies from vehicles. So really the bulk of our crime in town is related to property crime, which is, isn't such a horrible thing compared to the rest of the nation. So that is a little snapshot of Larcies from vehicles, 2021, 43, 2020, 48 and 2019, 32. And pretty much is all over town. And typically these folks will come 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. They'll come to a driveway. If the driveway, car's unlocked, they'll steal from it. If there's something to steal. If the key fob's in the car, they'll steal the car. And sometimes they also steal mail. And we had a good arrest a couple of weeks ago, four folks stealing mail. They had about $50,000 worth of checks in their car. And it's, it's really a tri-state ring that goes all around and steals checks and, and commits other crimes related to fraud. So that was a good arrest there. We can make it. We like to do that. Stolen vehicles, 39, substantial number of stolen vehicles. And I believe other than one or two all had the key in them and they were unlocked. So that's a really preventable crime right there. Once again, pretty much throughout town, but more or less concentrated in the, in the center and outskirts roads of town. So that's a really preventable crime right there. Once again, pretty much throughout town, but more or less concentrated in the center and outskirts roads of town. So that's combined stolen vehicles and larceny from vehicles gives you an idea of the overlay of the crime that's happening. So I like to highlight, too, that we're one of only three nationally accredited police departments in our county. Only 13% of agencies in Connecticut are accredited and less than 5% nationally. And that requires us to adhere to hundreds of files for compliance, make sure that we're following best practices and we're doing things nationally the best way that we can in the way we serve our community. And that has given us great dividends in many different ways in comparison to some things that have happened in our nation that we won't allow to happen in our department. So we're very proud of that. 2021, we continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Thankfully, it's waning and we'll all look forward to that when that's completely no longer a concern. Continue to respond to calls through police reform, compliance with the police accountability laws. We'll talk a little bit about in a couple of slides. We continue to work missing person murder investigation and we had a domestic violence murder. And a lot of folks don't appreciate how diverse our staff is. It's pretty incredible how diverse our department is. We're about to bring onboard, if all goes well, another female officer. So we'll have seven female officers, which is most in history, most Hispanic officers in history. And we have three African-American officers. Lieutenant George retired. We would have the most in history at that point. So we're very proud of that and we believe that makes our department a great place in the way we respond to our community. We continue to strengthen our crisis intervention team due to increase in psychiatric calls and the investigative fentanyl deaths, which hits our town. As great of a place it is, there's drugs here. There's folks with substance use issues and behavioral health issues and we are certainly part of that solution. And we do our best to try to combat that. Our community outreach and support team is a crisis intervention team of sorts. They handled 48 incidents in 2021. About 66% were adults, 34% were juveniles, and they built partnerships with Canadian Human Services and Behavioral Health Providers. And I'm very excited about the initiative of using some of the ARPA funds to fund something with Silver Hill to provide for folks that can't afford behavioral health services. This is a real need in town and that'll be a great thing if that does come to fruition. More 2021 highlights, complex frauds and thefts with arrests, retail crime with arrests, bank robbery with arrests, adult predator juvenile crime victims with arrests. Child pornography with arrests, stolen vehicles, thefts from vehicles, a serious hit and run injury with arrests. And now we come to our goals for 2022. We always want to enhance community engagement, focused training on officer safety and use of force. Comply with the police accountability law, enhance crime prevention messaging and marketing, and of course, move the police department building project forward as soon as possible. So ongoing public education, that's one of our officers in the parks putting notices under cars, letting folks know that they should secure their cars and take their keys with them and not leave valuables in open sight. The more we can remind people, the better we can hopefully prevent these kinds of crimes from happening because it's one of those few crimes that's entirely preventable. Except in some very certain instances where we have a group come up from down south typically and they will break a window in a car if they see something valuable in the car. And they typically hit parks or parking lots where there's a lot of vehicles parked and they come in and out very quickly. And they hit multiple towns throughout our area. But aside from them, we really don't see forced entries of vehicles. So that's a good thing. So police department renovation, a dire need. I think I went back to, I believe, 2016 where we have placeholders for capital monies. I know everyone's working very hard on this, but I think a decision needs to be made very, very soon. It's time. And I think everybody here appreciates that. And we've done a lot of thoughtful deliberation across many levels, but I think we've come to conclusion what seems to make sense. And I think it's time to make that decision and move forward. And talking connected with our current building renovation and or new building in place is a range, which is an essential part of our training function. And I'll talk a little bit about that. And recently, we just learned that the range that we use will no longer allow us to go up there on a Thursday. So now we only have half days on Monday, Wednesday, and a full day on Friday. And we're competing with more than a dozen police departments for that and civilians for use. So it's really become untenable in that way. And as part of the solution for our renovation or new, we really need to include this training facility. It's essential. So that's another part of the puzzle that we need to put together. So now we'll get into capital. So 26.7% decrease compared to FY22. Overall request is 267,000. The good news is from our previous requests, we were able to cut about $10,000 from it because we got a fingerprinting device from the state. We were surprised that we got that, but so that's certainly good news. Our capital item request is related to vehicles and equipment, TASER replacements, bulletproof vests replacements, in-car cameras as part of police accountability legislation. And that will conclude the balance of our cameras in our fleet and allow us to comply with the law, which becomes in effect on July 1st. Also includes fixed license plate readers, which we'll place in strategic areas in town that will gather information, will help us solve crimes. And in fact, just last week, we had a diversion theft in the center of town, about $50,000. And if we had cameras in place in the right areas, it could have been very helpful in solving that crime. So that's one of the things as part of our multifaceted townwide security initiatives that we're going to ask for and we believe will make the town a lot safer, will help us solve crimes a lot quicker. And that would also help to solve a serious hit and run accident on Onok Ridge Road. Took days for us to solve that and we believe would have taken hours potentially had we had those cameras up in strategic areas like we want them. And it also includes speed sentries, which are those flashing signs that you see that gather data, allow us to do enforcement and also educate neighborhoods about speeds and the need to slow down. And it also includes defibrillators, which are life-saving measure and they're coming towards the end of life. So certainly we have to replace those. So capital summary about the license plate readers. We've had mobile license plate readers for nearly seven years. We haven't had one privacy concern or issue. And they capture images of both the vehicle and potential identifying details and the license plate. We will deploy them in strategic areas in town. We're going to strictly control data access, storage, sharing and retention. It's a searchable database. We can put alerts there for hot lists, amber alerts and vehicles of interest. And the cost, which is pretty nominal, $38,000, includes installation and maintenance. It's like a lease per se for a year. We're going to get them in place, try them out for a year or so, see what the return on investment is, and then we can renew that. Because you know, the capital investment of putting these cameras in town will be substantial. So it seems like a very cost-effective way to move this initiative forward. And I've spoken with the area chiefs and it's a very effective crime-solving tool. One agency said they believe they've solved more than 100 crimes with these camera systems and they're not that prime representative of town. So that's a pretty incredible example there. About vehicles. Our vehicles are first to respond to all 911 calls. They serve as mobile 24/7 offices and they're essential emergency equipment. The goal is to replace our frontline patrol vehicles that have high mileage and we'll look at a chart in a minute and high repair costs. We've moved almost exclusively to all Ford SUVs, which is the goal, the very safe and reliable. Aside from some periodic water pump issues that are very expensive to fix, they've been very reliable in that way. And three vehicles for FY23 is in line with our five-year capital plan and industry best practice is replace at 80, 85,000 miles. That's our forecast that shows our operational patrol fleet. You can see there's a fair number of vehicles that are approaching that 80,000 to 100,000 mile mileage. So we're very conservative in the way we operate our fleet. It's been very stable and reliable in a lot of ways. And I believe that's because of the plan that's been embraced, capital plan of 32, 32, 3. And that allows us to replace the vehicles periodically and get those vehicles that aren't so reliable offline and get more reliable vehicles in place. Benchmarking, everybody wants to see that, right? So we're very conservative in the way we place our vehicles compared to comparable agencies like Darian. Three to five vehicles a year. Wilton is five to six vehicles a year and we're two to three. So that's pretty conservative in the way we manage our fleet and replace our vehicles. So we're very comfortable with that replacement schedule and I encourage everyone to embrace that.
But comparatively speaking, Greenwich is a much larger fleet than ours.
It is. It is a much larger fleet. That's right.
And the question always comes up about the mileage and my response over the years has been, if you've ever had a minute to go over and look at one of the cars and see what 85,000 miles on a police cruiser looks like. It is not 85,000 miles on a family car. It is hard, hard use.
It's like 160,000.
It's something. I remember looking inside of a patrol car a few years back. I'm like, this is absolutely unbelievable what it looks like. It was.
Really, they fall apart at 85,000.
Steve, what do you know about cars?
I was in the front seat. I was in the front seat, not the back.
We're not checked. Now we're going to talk about operating. So operating request for FY23 is 6,859,777, overall increase of 3.1% compared to FY22. And about 97% of the increase is due to labor agreement obligations and contractual wage increases. So we have very little play with as far as our budget's concerned and we're very conservative, like I said, and typically we finish with a surplus, small surplus at the end of each fiscal year because we're very conservative the way we spend our money. So it's salary offset is something that we started in FY21. That's based on a projected nine-month vacancy due to retirement or resignation of two top step officers. And we're going to talk about staffing in a few slides. And you know, we're a little distinct from most departments that come before you and that takes us between nine and 12 months to fill a vacancy due to police academy slots and on-the-job training and recruiting and selection and all that. So we really have to keep that pipeline full, otherwise we're going to get behind the curve. We typically have two to three vacancies at one time due to a sick person, someone's long-term sick or long-term injured. So really, you know, to keep those, the staffing levels full, which is 47. That's a perfect complement for the way we are able to provide the services to our town. So that's how careful we are and we build our budget as far as decreases and increases. You know, most of the increases this fiscal year were due to contractual settlements and obligations that we have there. And we do reduce lines when we're able to and we're very careful about what we ask for and smart about it. For staffing, right now we have seven sworn members that are eligible to retire. And there are dozens of agencies in Connecticut that are vying for candidates. The candidate pool is not what it was years ago. And it's very difficult, in fact, for us to get a good, a great candidate that we want to work in New Canaan. And it's also difficult for us to get them a slot in the training academies. It's becoming even more difficult. There's some competition. And so that's another factor in our staffing and how we need to keep our pipelines full. Ideal staffing compliment is 47 sworn officers. We have long hiring and training timelines. And so that's why it's really important to keep that full. And currently we're down three officers down to retirement. One officer, a long-term injured leave. We just had another officer, a long-term sick leave likely. And another officer just came back from military leave, so we're still down three. So that's a very typical number that's not able to fill our compliment. That's our staffing challenge, gives you an idea of the complexity of what we're able to cover. And you know, people always ask, and we've seen this happen before, when our compliment gets low or we're not able to fill the slots that we need to fill, we need to cut back services and we hate to do that. We had a circumstance several years ago where we were down and we had to eliminate our community impact officer program in the center of town. That's been able to be filled for the past several years. So that's a great thing and the community loves it. The businesses love that. And we also are able to fill our school resource officer at the middle school and at the high school. And so that takes three officers just off our compliment there. So that's why it's really important to keep our compliment at 47. It's a critical number for us. We'll talk about overtime and our overtime request is based on historical spending, which is tied to labor agreement obligations. And our overtime is less than 10.5% of our aggregate salaries, whereas nationwide benchmarking is about 18%. And we're very in line with area police departments and emergency services. That's a question I ask myself every time I build our overtime budget. And now we have a whole lot of data there and that's related to a scheduling scheduling program that we were able to implement and we're able to keep that. Okay, and so that's our scheduling program gives us percentages about what we spend our overtime on. And that's roughly 50% or so of our spending related to training, which we like to see second supervisor, shift overtime, time off, shift short to sick call and administrative. So that's a very useful data point that we were able to use and when we do build in our overtime request. So that's our goal every year. We're requesting 535. We're forecasting about 525 this year, but we had about a 4.85% wage increase that needs to be factored in. And our FY21 actual was 44. And I think as Dr. Lutz talked about, we did decrease spending specifically related to training due to COVID because we couldn't do the things that we normally could do. So that's going to start to normalize very soon once things are back to normal. So that's something to consider.
I have a question. Were you able, when you put in that program for overtime, were you also able to negotiate with the unions? There was an issue as to the supervisor having to be or the sergeant having to be there for certain times during duty call?
Yeah, we were able to scale that back somewhat. Our previous contract negotiation, not quite where what we wanted, but it was a compromise. So that has helped somewhat.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief?
Well, can you remind us, what is that overtime increase? What is the, what is the increase versus last year?
Oh, sure. So we're projecting this fiscal year is going to be about 525. And last fiscal year of 21, which isn't a normal year because COVID impacted that as FY20, it was about 484. So that's what we're projecting.
In the past, we talked about hiring one or two more officers to offset it so that you wouldn't have those conflicts or requirements for overtime. Have you looked at that aspect of it and seen if it would work?
Yeah, I mean, it's a balancing. I think 47 is a good number for us. And if we add to the compliment, obviously that's going to enhance our full-time salary line and benefits and things like that. So given the pretty conservative overtime lineup we have, about 10.5% of our aggregate salaries, which is much less than typically area police department spend in overtime. I think it's a good number for us. So certainly we'd love more personnel, but cost balance, I love it. I think right now 47 is a good number. And we're comfortable with the overtime that we have. So I think things are running pretty well and we're very comfortable with how we spend the town's money.
Okay.
One thing that I've been asked in public about the new police station, and I know it's, you know, not that far off, but it's far enough off where questions are coming up about will there be an increased need for other staff in a new building? And you know, I've said the answer I think is no, because it's been 47 since the beginning of time. I mean, I can't, you know, I've been around a while. I don't remember it being any more than that.
We're at 45 about six years ago. And some people are at 47 and that was really largely due to a commitment to have an officer at the middle school and also the plan to have an officer in the center of town. So that kind of filled those two slots there.
Yeah.
I don't think it's going to increase the building. No, it's not going to increase our staffing compliment in that way.
Right.
So you have 47 sworn officers and then how many civilians on?
We have about six civilians.
And that's the total, just those?
That's the total.
That's it.
There's two crossing guards that are part-time.
I'll just make a comment that I'll do everything I can to make sure that police that the police station is moves along as fast as possible because
You and me both.
I think it's a shame that it's taken this long and the town, I said this the last meeting, town's only going to be paying more money the longer we wait and it's
Certainly inflation's increasing, right? Labor costs, et cetera. So the longer we will eat, the more we're going to pay.
I wish I had an answer as to what's taking so long, but I wish I had an answer as to what's taking so long, but I'll just say whatever I can do. We'll, we'll get there. We'll, we'll get there. I mean, this, this body, this body has we've done straw polls. You've got twelve, you've got twelve anxious town council members ready to, ready to support what you're gonna do. So we're ready when it comes to us. So we'll, we'll continue to ask the question.
This isn't the time, but I agree with Mark said it. We have to move on this, but that's, let's go.
Agreed.
We agree.
Agreed.
I had a question about the license plate readers.
Yes.
How does that work? Are they fixed and they send a message?
Yes, they're fully independent. It's all inclusive, meaning it's cellular data is included. So it's, there's no other cost than that fixed thirty eight thousand dollars for those X number of cameras that we're going to place throughout strategic places in town. So they're all independent and they're exceptional. I mean, I was skeptical of it a number of years ago because its technology just wasn't stable. But now it's at a point where it's really stable and it's cost effective and it just makes sense. And, you know, the goal frankly is hopefully you'll embrace it and improve the money. And then a year from now we'll come back with some, some data points about how successful it was and, and why it's a continued good investment.
It captures images and then it sends it to a software program. It's accessed by us.
Right.
And we'll send you a notice if there's a reason that particular car.
Send it to our phone, right. So it's, it's pretty.
And are there privacy issues with that? Like is the data?
There's none.
Yeah.
No, it's all secure, so we'll only be able to access it. And there's no privacy issue because it's on a public road. License plate is not a private issue. For example, I could put an officer on South Avenue and they could write down every single license plate that goes by perfectly legal. This is just a more efficient way of gathering that data.
It doesn't process the vehicle owner information or any of that. It's not contained in the system that would be processed by us after the fact. So it would just capture the license plate.
Like if it's stolen or something.
The thirty eight thousand dollars is for one year, but for how many units?
Ten units.
Ten, okay.
What's the history of data security with that? Like, has there been any hacking of any of those systems?
I'm sorry?
With all the, the data that you're collecting with the license plate readers? What's the history of data security?
It's exceptional. We've never had an issue.
Hey Chief, can you just real quick talk about the security cameras in the two hundred K in relation to your budget, right?
Yes, I have a presentation. It's coming.
All right, let's do it.
Can I ask a question about that too, Chief? Just, sorry, it's Hillary speaking from the nether region. So the LPRs are separate and apart from the two hundred thousand ask that's coming for increased security cameras around town and in the parks, correct?
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. So the LPRs are a part of this budget. The cameras that Mr. Morrow just referenced are, are going to be a separate ask coming later.
Yes, that's right. It's coming right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Welcome. So townwide security initiatives, it's been approved by the police commission, by the board of finance and announced before you folks. So this is kind of a snapshot of how we're gonna, we're looking at this issue. We're trying to address it. Basic risk management process, we're identifying the risk, assessing it, reviewing controls and controlling the risk. So crime in New Canaan, stolen vehicles, car breaks, broken windows in parks, small percentage of those vehicles. And Waveney Park and Irwin Park. So it's not quite an epidemic. If you look at the numbers here, Irwin Park, thankfully, no, no break ins so far this year. Four in twenty one and four in twenty. And Waveney Five, a little bit of spurt of activity there that generated some attention. And four in twenty twenty one and only one in twenty twenty. So, but it's one of the few areas in town where you'll see an actual broken window to enter the vehicle, which is unusual because it's that sophisticated group that's coming. They know that most likely someone that's in a park left their purse in the car, left their wallet in the car. And they'll break the window to get that and they'll be in and out very quickly and they're very sophisticated and fast. So you probably, if you were in the park, you wouldn't even notice them because they're so quick. And they blend in, they'll rent a car that blends in. And it's not some car that comes in with a loud muffler and it's going to cause a lot of attention. They're going to come in really quick. They're going to break the window. They're going to get in the car and they'll be out within minutes. So that's why it's really important for us to, to enhance security initiatives in our parks to make sure that people feel a little bit more secure and we're able to gather some data that'll help us investigate these crimes more effectively. So if you could play that video. Not playing?
I, just while we're waiting. I would imagine that policing has changed quite a bit, given things that are happening on social media and just, you know, the, the use of just technology. And how is that impacting how you police and how you have to invest in certain areas?
You know, it's everything from to managing expectations when, when an event occurs because things are out there within seconds versus days or hours. And so you have to be very thoughtful about how you do that. It allows us to message a lot better than we used to be able to. But it, we're able to embrace tools, but also the bad guys embrace those tools too. And they share information across social media and platforms and things like that, that nobody really expects. You know, that we've had a, there's a residence in town that was hit three times over the course of four years and multiple cars stolen from it. And it's no coincidence. It's in an odd part of town. There's no doubt that people were sharing information about that. So that, that's a concern in that way too. And this, this video isn't playing that one. There you go. Okay, so this guy's trying to break into the car. So he's got his phone. He's trying to see if the car's unlocked. Car's locked. He leaves it. So that's a crime prevention message. Lock your car and you won't become a victim. We see this time and time again. These people will come into a driveway, they'll try to try the car, they'll try to steal it or they'll try to steal from it. When it's locked, they move on to an easier target. So don't be that easy target. And that's, that's a message from us. Next slide, please. Please, we talked a little bit about large vehicles, which we believe these cameras will help us with and gather information about some of these bad guys that are coming into town and committing crimes against our residents. Next slide, stolen vehicles, we saw that too. Next slide. The overlay. Next slide. So crime in New Canaan, complex frauds and thefts. We see a lot of that in the center of town. We've had pretty some, some pretty substantial crimes happen in the center of town related to retail thefts, jewelry theft, we had a robbery. We had a bank robbery, serious hit and run accident on the owner of Great Road. Jewelry store break and enter, residential burglaries, bank robbery. So all kinds of stuff is happening in town as safe as it is. But we believe that these security initiatives are really going to help us more effectively gather data and information and catch these bad guys quicker and maybe prevent them from coming here in the first place, once they, they hear about what we're doing. So that was a bank robbery and believe it or not, people rob banks. So the message here is just because we're going to have video cameras in strategic places in town, doesn't mean it's going to necessarily prevent crime. Because people still rob banks and this guy had a gun. Two guys robbed the bank. They had a gun. Bank had cameras. They weren't so great, but good enough. And thankfully, we were able to capture these guys and arrest them. And that took days, could have been hours if we had our, our license plate readers out, which are a part of our typical normal FY twenty three capital and or if we had strategic cameras in the center of town like this proposes.
Bank robbers wear ties.
It's a movie thing, right?
What bank is that?
Let's keep people.
Yes. When did that happen?
That happened fall of twenty twenty.
Is it a deterrent to put, do you tell like other signs that say we read license plates in this town? You know, like you want to have, you have a security sign on your house so people know it's
Sure.
Like, is that something you do to deter people from coming in and?
A lot of businesses will do that, yeah. I'm, I'm certain we're going to do that with the cameras we're going to put in place, but a lot of them are going to blend in in areas because you want them to blend in. But sure, a lot of businesses do do that. So ongoing partnerships, ongoing messaging, that's a really important thing for us. So it's a two hundred thousand dollar request. We intend to build on and strengthen initiatives in Waveney Park, Irwin Park, center of town. Partner with Public Works and IT. And the initiatives may mitigate some crimes, but crime prevention best practices are essential. So it's really a partnership with the community, but this, I believe this is going to calm a lot of people and make them feel more comfortable, especially in our parks in the center of town. And certainly that's what we want. We want a resident to feel secure and safe as best we can. But they also have to practice good crime, crime prevention strategies.
Are these high resolution cameras?
Yes.
Okay.
They will be very high resolution, yeah.
How many are there for two hundred thousand?
We don't have a number yet.
Oh, you don't have a number?
Yeah. I have an idea in my head, but you know. We're, it's going to be a very comprehensive plan. And sharing specifics of it in public place is not so smart. I wanted to share the general overview in public to let everybody know that we're, we're on top of it and we're concerned about it and we're going to make it happen. So that's an important thing, but I'm glad to come once this initiative moves forward and share an executive session, some details to let you know that we're spending the money wisely and we're, we're doing this as, as best we can.
Okay.
Next slide. So that gives you an idea of the progress. Waveney is pretty far along. In fact, there's been some recent work there. So that's going to be buttoned up very soon. A couple more items there. Irwin Park, some work was done recently there, but more work needs to be done. In the center of town, there's a little bit of work there, but lots more to do. So that gives you an idea without giving you percentages of progress there. And we'll continually adapt to changing crime trends. And that's our budget forecast for spending the two hundred, about twenty five in Waveney, seventy five in Irwin and about a hundred and twenty five in the center of town. That's a little fungible in a lot of ways, but that's a, that's a good approximation of what we think we're going to need to spend in those areas to, to strengthen those initiatives. And so that's our, our management plan, how we're going to execute and manage the project and continual reassessment to make sure what we're doing is working. And maybe adopting new technologies that come up and we believe are stable and we're able to use. And we're all about that and making our residents feel a lot more safe and secure. Goals, provide reassurance and comfort to residents, merchants and park users. And we'll gladly provide regular progress, progress updates to all boards. And we're going to balance thoughtful and creative security initiatives with privacy concerns, with strong access controls. And we're going to leverage technology tools to help investigate crimes and enhance public safety. So that's a snapshot of the goals that we're going to accomplish as a result of this request.
Is this new or has this been approved by the board of finance?
It has been approved by the board of finance, yes.
So it's coming to us.
And is it two hundred or two twenty five?
Two hundred.
Because you, one of your charts listed the, the three locations in a total two twenty five.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Give me more money.
I didn't say that. No, but I think, you know, I thank you for the presentation. I think, you know, this, this council and, and, you know, I won't speak for Hillary because I know she's out there, but she's been on this initiative since before she was elected. So shout out to Hillary for, for being there and pushing this along. I know Mike Morrow has been there pushing it as well. So I mean, this is one of those things that you had, the twelve of us had a love. We haven't voted yet, but I mean, this is a big deal for this town. We're charged with providing the health and safety of this town and it's a big deal for us. So thank you very much for putting this forward and we'll, I'm sure we'll be discussing it further. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions while we have? Just, you know, this is our chance to thank you. The, the, keeping us safe is one thing, but the the way this department makes the town feel in terms of being personal, being out there, the, the coffee with the cops, the, the SRO officers in the schools, the way they, they, they deal with the youth on a very positive, in a very positive way. You really, please share with the guys how important it is that they are out there every day. That downtown, the downtown officer, I mean, that was a unbelievable initiative and the impact that she's had downtown.
We had two and they go open home runs.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it really is amazing. And people love that interaction. They really do. They love being able to, you know, just talk, you know, what's going on. I mean, it really is a, it's a huge deal in town. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Well said.
I, I don't, I don't think we were scheduled to vote tonight on this. So we'll, yeah, we'll vote on another meeting. Thank you. We've got to notice the vote, I think.
It would be too easy to vote right now.
Can I vote?
All right, next up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Next up, Albie. Hopefully your, your technology curve is ready to roll. Oh, we get Jack Horner too.
Chairman. Fire Commissioner Horner.
Well, I'll be getting set up. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jack Horner. I'm the head of our fire commission. And I'd like to introduce to you Chief Albie Bassett. Albie is new to the town. We hired him in September of last year. We hired him to be the assistant chief upon the retirement of Chief Jack Hennessy. Albie was promoted to interim chief. He's also the interim head of and director of fire services. His official probationary period, and I hate to call someone with this many years' experience a probie, but anyway, it's officially up on the twentieth of this month. The fire commission unanimously voted to have Albie made the chief and director of fire services. And we've asked the board of selectmen at their meeting on the twenty second to make that official. So thank you all very much and, and welcome Albie Bassett as our new fire chief.
Nice to meet everybody for the first time. Some of you I've met on Zoom, so I'm glad to see everybody in person. And I see familiar faces from around town too, so it's great. And I just wanted Assistant Chief Kimes from emergency management is also in the back. He's been through the budget and a few times and feel free if I'm stumbling there, Chief, to jump in. So, um, two thousand twenty three budget request. So we sent out the annual report, pretty comprehensive. What we did over the last year as the fire department. It was structured over the last ten years by my predecessor, Chief Hennessy. Kind of followed that format, kind of filled in the blanks with a lot of the stuff we're doing numbers wise. So I want to bring a few of those up. I put these in red. I kind of, my vision changed direction a little bit and be a little more proactive than priding ourselves on the reactive, which is we responded to eleven hundred forty incidents. You know, we're going to respond to incidents. There's no question about it. But it, my goal to try to bring that number down and do a lot more proactive public education and more community contacts as you'll see what we, I started to count on my next column. So a hundred, eleven forty was our incidence. We had three decent major fires that equaled a one point three million dollars worth of property loss, not a good number for us for the, any fire service. Unfortunately, that was a lightning strike on Devon Wood in July. And that caused major structural damage and electrical damage in the house. They're doing a lot more repairs than the actual fire damage. But that's because of the electrical system being so damaged. That's why our property loss was so high up there. So this year was a a higher property loss than in previous years. We do have a reduction in volunteer workforce. We currently still have twenty volunteers on the roster. We lost six of them to career jobs, four being ours over the last a couple of years. We hired our volunteers within, the commissioned it. And a couple others went to other career departments. So we're putting out a very good product. Our, it's very difficult to keep them in town as a volunteer. And money, many of them do live out of town. That's one of the downsides of our volunteer force. Small percentage, Russ, if you want to throw in a number there, I think it's probably about twenty five percent that actually live in town, correct?
Almost fifty, fifty.
Oh, it's fifty now, okay. So fifty percent of them do live in town. Most of them live out of town. A lot of them are looking for that career side. And we do put out a very good product, good training for the volunteers and they do find that career job and do move on. So some of the stuff, so those are downsides for us right now. Some of the good things that we did do. Everything's good. I mean, rephrase that. But we did estimate about thirty five hundred community contacts between our fire marshal's office, the staff that's on duty every day, the volunteer company that's going out and doing special events. So these could be anything from fire prevention details to the inspections, to smoke detector installs or battery changes. I'm trying to capture all those numbers. I think it's actually low based on our reporting system. That's what I was able to pull out in my six months here so far, that we did do this many. And hopefully that number is going to go up exponentially over the next, you know, year and years to come. Because that's all about prevention right there and being proactive. Fifty seven public, public education visits. That's the actual numbers that were documented. Those are mostly schools. So we had a couple that were done in, in senior centers within the town. Unfortunately, and we keep hearing COVID, but that's definitely one thing that was brought to a halt in all fire departments over the last Unfortunately, and we keep hearing COVID, but that's definitely one thing that was brought to a halt in all fire departments over the last couple of years. So we just didn't want to lap them a couple of weeks ago. We're hoping to bring that back up and be able to get some public education out to the seniors and do more than fifty-seven of them that were just school age children. You know, probably K through three is the target audience right now on public education. So that's one thing that we want to we want to increase and, you know, get something in high schools again before they go off to college. Get something for newcomers coming into town that we're seeing. We see that on our eleven forty incidents. We do see a deficiency in what people actually know about their house and how they're operating their house. And that causes a potential problem and our firefighters actually educate them. So we're educating them on calls. We could probably educate them in different events throughout the town. And, sorry about that. And we did, I count a hundred and eighty smoke and CO detector installs. So that's what we had documented, that we actually went out and installed the smoke detector for somebody in the community. I did not have a number on actual batteries, but that's where we are with a little more proactive, trying to, you know, make everything a little more proactive out there for the for the department. So what have we accomplished in twenty-two? We finally got our rescue truck. So that was a capital, probably one thing that First Selectmen forgot about. It got delivered since the last time he met you guys. So it is here. Come and see it. It just made the advertiser today, I believe. Little story about it. So it's here in town. It replaced a twenty-one-year-old vehicle. My position, as the Commissioner mentioned, was created in two thousand twenty-two. So I started in September under Chief Hennessy. Maintained, continued operations under the pandemic. We've had some challenges in the firehouse, which is in the fire station living twenty-four seven and, you know, people there all the time. It was very difficult as people got COVID, everybody got COVID. We had that run through the department a couple of times. So we were able to maintain it with the new Kane and staffing throughout all of the spikes in the COVID problem as we move forward. We filled a vacant fire inspector position. So a second part-timer was brought back on from our current, the previous one that retired Commissioner, about a year prior. Yeah, about a year prior. And then we brought the second inspector on. Again, that, the good thing is with COVID deciding, they were able to get in the buildings again, you know, and do live inspections and doing the life safety things that they needed to do in the in the businesses and multifamilies. And we continue to enhance our water supply system. A couple cisterns were added throughout the town. Where we're going, two thousand twenty-three, continue, as I mentioned, being proactive with fire prevention, the inspections. We're starting to look at revising and resurrecting our pre-planning, which is actually the firefighters going out and getting into businesses. This is above and beyond the inspectors doing their life safety inspection. The firefighters going out are specifically targeting things that are going to save money for that person, whether it's an apartment building, whether it's a business, if they have a problem in there, how do we shut utilities down? How do we stop a fire from moving from one building to the other? So they're going to look at those specifics as far as firefighting and damage control when they go out. So not really doing the life safety side of it, but doing the the impact is a better word for it. Trying to improve our volunteer retention recruitment programs. You see some signs around town right now. So one of our volunteers has taken the lead on that, giving, posting some signs, doing a lot with social media to try to bring in the, to bring in volunteers. One of our, you know, challenges, you know, we never taught really in-house. That's one thing that I'm looking at. You know, and I would, if I couldn't get this technology going tonight, that would have been a problem because I was, I sold myself on training when I came here and able to do all this. So. Yeah, so if it didn't work, that would have been bad. But I'm looking at some different ways and we heard the the school system talk tonight. But I'm looking at making it more, making it easier for that volunteer firefighter to take his initial class, his or her initial class. You know, online, bringing them in for only the hands-on training. We're doing very well with Zoom and all the online, you know, components that people can watch and read and do what they need to do and learn from the computer and then come in and do the hands-on portion of the class, which might take a hundred and forty-hour program. And maybe we can shrink it down to probably about fifty or sixty hands-on hours and still get the what they need to and get tested out and become firefighters. So maybe that would help somebody, especially someone, and when we look at our demographic out there compared to other departments that I've taught in, one being Darian and Weston, I do a lot of volunteer teaching there. The people, Weston had a lot of people traveling, coming in by train. So I'm like, well, maybe that's our reason here. And saying, you know, maybe there is interest and they're coming in from New York or Westchester. They just don't have time to get to class at seven o'clock every night. So that that could be that benefit for them to help with recruitment. And then hopefully retention, getting them, doing some more things, more than just responding to calls. And that's one of the things with the the public education. Continue to enhance our water supply. I know our Fire Marshal Paul Payne is working a little closer with Tiger to see where we can maybe help out more financially for homeowner to actually put a cistern or what we call dry hydrant in. Right now, we we provide the parts for them, which is great, but the labor to put that in is pretty expensive. And there's really not a lot of return for them to put a couple, you know, ten thousand gallon tank in their yard. They're not getting a huge insurance kickback. So Paul's working with Tiger to figure out the town's paving plan to see if we have coal to sacks that are on our priority list to drop the tank. And they're going to split, we'll split the cost with the with highway to do the labor to get them in there so we can enhance our water supply.
Probably not the best to say kickbacks, though. I said probably not the best to say get it kicked back.
I'm sorry. Yes, so and the importance of water supply and one of our key measures is is the ISO rating, which we're a four, which is decent. That affects all your insurance rates, residential and commercial. So the higher number you are, we are, the more costly homeowners' insurances and commercial insurances for you. For homeowners, it's not a huge deal. So to put a thirty thousand gallon or ten thousand gallon tank in their front yard, I'm not getting that return. I'm saving a hundred dollars a year on insurance. It's not, it's not really helping them. Life safety wise, it's great, but to see that financial side of it is tough. For us to stay low on the on the commercial side, it really keeps the businesses, their insurance down on, you know, some of the manufacturing and, you know, retail stores, it helps them with insurance a lot more. Enhancing regional partnerships, looking at mutual aid agreements to to keep us up to standards, to try to get our to try to get the number of firefighters on scene in the right, in the the required amount of time to meet that standard so that we need to go to mutual aid very quickly on that, especially during the day. Because our average response is seven people per call. And most of our downtown area would require twenty-four firefighters in a six, six-minute response. Okay, so we're not going to get that with our current staffing and our volunteers. So mutual aid is very important on on those types of numbers. And we get to have a few less in the in the residential areas, but we still need to go to mutual aid more. So we're looking at the the mutual aid and how we call mutual aid and get them on the road faster. We're still in part of the regional dispatch system. So that's a, that's a big line item in our budget that we pay Westport to do our fire dispatching and nine-one-one answering for fire. So they're moving to Sacred Heart right now. So they're in transition. So it's going to be even more efficient to get the claw out faster, which is good. So that's a good regional partner that we have there. And I'm trying to explore grant opportunities and engage the firefighters on, you know, career and volunteer side to come up with reasons why we need things and why we can't pay for them. And that's the key thing with most of the the grants. So, you know, currently just solicited for three grants at the beginning of the year. I think one we've been denied for, but we'll go for it again in April. But just trying to look for those other funding sources to pay for some of our capital stuff that we're governed by these state mandates, OSHA mandates, you know, NFPA requirements, National Fire Protection Agency. So they kind of push us to get rid of equipment that a specific service life and not look at it so much as we listen to police cars about miles. We have years on a lot of our equipment. So it's it's a hard deadline that says, all right, you need to get rid of it by this day. So that's where grants really help us with that. So we're trying to get those. So where are we going with performance measures? One thing I'm working on is trying to look at our property protected or, you know, what our property loss versus our value was. So how much do we actually protect on different calls? So working with the current records management system to see, all right, this was a potential incident. You know, what did our fire service do? What did our public education do, which is a little harder to capture, but we're going to get there? What did we do to stop this loss from happening or how did we make it less? So that's one thing that we're trying to work on as far as performance measures. Volunteer, you know, retention activity levels, we still keep that, whether it's training or other activities and calls that they responded to. And as always, our, and continue with our community contacts and get a better number on that, that we're actually interacting and doing something positive for the community. So that's kind of where what we did, what we're looking to go and how I'm going to measure it. Just to be fair, we don't have any revenue. This year, we might, I joked in the, I think the finance meeting, we might have had a little more revenue because of blasting. If anyone lives near one twenty-three and Kane and Paris this year, I think we made a few more dollars. But we're not a revenue generating department. You know, even false alarms, we don't like to charge for. I am tracking that now. And pretty much, you know, when I start noticing them, you know, in the reporting system, the Fire Marshal gets on it and fixes the problem. So that's, that's what we really want, you know, whether it's the country club, the alarm keeps coming in. Changer, change the head, replace, you know, move the head, do something that stops it from going off that still keeps people safe. Because we don't want that fear of my alarm went off, I'm not going to call the Fire Department. Or I'm going to make the alarm company call my house first and I'll tell you whether or not to have the Fire Department come. That's never a good idea with, when there's a fire that might have started and, you know, someone's trying to put it out. So, you know, let the alarm do its thing. So we're not a big fan of the alarm ordinance. And we don't have that many of them that come in routinely. And looking at it, it's not the same alarm a lot of times in those places. So in the Fire Marshal's Plan reviews are in the building department's V schedule. So it's already accounted for there. So what are we spending this year? We do have a three-point, about a three point nine percent increase overall in our budget. It's, we're going up to the four point two eight three, nine one seven. Ninety-one percent of that is personnel expenses. So that's, as with most of our, with the Police Department also, that's the major cost is having the twenty-four seven staff. So just over ninety percent is that, eight percent is, or almost nine percent is other operating expenses. Chief always, Chief Hennessy always use non-discretionary funding and discretionary. So when the ninety-six point eight four percent discretionary or non-discretionary, rather, is the salaries, it's all the contracted stuff. It's stuff that we can't, we have to do as far as service contracts and things to keep to keep us legal in the firehouse. And the, what he claimed was discretionary. I don't have that same vision, but I kept it in there because we started the budget together. But that three percent is is a lot of things like repairs and just changing equipment that's at its end of its service life, you know, wait until it breaks. And then there's a downtime to get it replaced. Those things were in the discretionary. So my feeling is if it's, if we're asking for it, we need it. You know, there's nothing really in there that's fluff that that we're trying to, to, you know, to put in there. We might be trying to upgrade a tool for a reason. And we're going to be honest and just tell you, hey, this is the reason why that we need to start to look at this tool and or this this item and start moving forward. So one of our drivers, as I mentioned, the collective bargaining agreement, we had this year coming up is a two point five increase percent. That's reflected here and that's reflected across all salary lines. Large increase in our educational incentives. The career staff does get a stipend for each certification they hold as they acquire it. That's annual. So there was an increase of their their stipend and the firefighters continue to get certified in different classes, which is great. You know, that's, that's, if two people get certified, that spills over to the other, you know, four people, you know, between the career and volunteers. So that's good education for everybody, new techniques and so on. So that's one of the biggest drivers of the budget. Service contracts, the new records management system, which I will be able to get you more data once it's up and running. That's going to, our Firehouse software is sunsetting at the end of this year. It's been in place for, I would bet, twenty years for most fire departments when the first computer came in, so did Firehouse. And all our fire departments have been running it so that records management system is coming to an end. So we're in the process right now of looking at a new system and staffing software. Similar to what the Chief Police was just mentioning about his department. But a staffing software that we can look and manage the the staff and the time off a little easier and see in those spikes and so on. The records management system, money-wise, it's probably triple the cost of what Firehouse was. I think we put in for sixteen thousand go in that budget for that one. But it's going to do, it does, you know, everything for the Fire Marshal's Office. And us, you know, for incident reporting, our training records, everything that we need to bring that information out is in that records management system. Wanted to talk a little about the overtime. I was a little naive thinking that, you know, all right, this is easy. You know, we have firefighters, they take time off, I have to fill it. So I wanted to clarify that a little more. So we do have a minimum staffing, which is six. That was agreed upon probably fifteen years ago. Yeah, they they worked up, yeah, just about fifteen years ago, that they brought it up to six staffing. It's, you know, we, there's nothing on the horizon to increase that, but like I mentioned earlier, if there was a downtown fire, we need twenty-four on duty. That's what the National Fire Protection Agency says. So we're not looking to go to that route. We're going to do that through mutual aid and callback and everything we need to do to bring that in. But they're six on duty all the time. So anytime they take off, that's compensated time off. When a career member takes off, I need to, I need to replace them. Okay, so that could be from, you know, sick, injured, callback or sick, injured, they could be off on training time. Their compensated time is the vacation and holiday time that they're allotted on it every year. And then there's other overtime for different things that they are, you know, involved in, you know, different regionalization projects that they're attending on a monthly or bimonthly basis. So that would fall under the other OT, other overtime as people take off. The drivers of that, and here's, and it's weird that there's only, with a new full-time Assistant Chief and, but with the Chief leaving, my position not getting filled, we only have a sixteen hundred dollar increase in full-time salaries. And a senior member retired, replaced with a probationary firefighter. So that's saved us on the full-time salary line. Our part-time salary line increased because of an additional inspector. So he's working one day a week and helping out the Fire Marshal's Office. Our overtime for vacation, holidays and sick leave, you can see the increases. Most of that is from the contract increase. The chief used the three-year average. I had the question with the Finance Committee last meeting, you know, and I did a little research on it. They asked if, did we have a decrease in time off during COVID? And technically, we really didn't because they, they weren't allowed to carry additional time over. So they all burned it at the end of the fiscal year. So there wasn't a really a decrease. So that's why I was, when she asked that question, why is the number still so high? And it never, it never had a dip in the time off. Our sick time did go up because And it, it never, it never had a dip in the time off. Uh, our sick time did go up because of the quarantines. So that's where, on that average, the sick time quarantines, uh, there was a, a increase on that. Uh, but if it wasn't COVID, uh, sick time was actually down um, slightly. Uh, educational incentives are um, that's the stipend, so that went up seventeen thousand based on the contract. And the additional um, classes certifications that the firefighters are um. Are completing. Uh, energy and fuel, this was given us to, by building management. So it was six thousand increase. Um, that's what was given to us just before oil went up. So we'll see where that goes. So that was operating. I guess I can take any questions if I missed anything or I was unclear. All right, our, our capital request, um. We are looking for uh, SCBA cylinders. That's one of those fifteen-year things. So um, so replacing cylinders as they expire. Um, and, you know, the ones I've been in before, that some of you probably seen the protective clothing. Uh, increase, we did have an increase of about twenty-three percent on our turnout gear, our firefighting gear. So uh, that was raised uh, a little bit for twenty-three. Um, and then the hose, the tools and the water supply improvement has been um. Roughly ten every year, so we're asking for those same amounts. The addition is the fifteen-five. That um, wasn't in the capital plan until I arrived. Um, one of the needs that I identified. Is cap, is uh, tri-band radios. Um, what this does is, there's three levels of frequencies, basically. Low band, mid-band and high band. And we only have one single band in New Canaan that we use in town. Perfect for us. The problem with asking us to do regional, uh, bringing in regional partners, mutual aid. Is they ask us to go to them too. So when we're going out of town, our firefighters can't talk to. The incident commander and the other firefighters on the scene. So that kind of raised a red flag for me coming in and saying, well, wait a minute. You know, I did this ten years ago, my previous, you know, they, they gave us one radio and said, go for it. And it's like, well, this ain't good. My three firefighters that are with me, they can't talk. If they get lost, if they get hurt, they can't call anybody. So looking to start a project, this is one of the grant fund it, and you'll see how we split it up, myself and Josh. The actual grant funding is three seventeen, I think it's on there. Uh, it's being blocked by my um. My uh, pictures of everyone online. So three seventeen was my grant, three thirteen is my grant request. Uh, to the federal government. Uh, I had the. I put a little more in there to make it a lot more firefighter safety. So um. That is a very large project and doing some other things that we can use. And that would be some of those things that I would call discretionary. At that point. So do I need to do them if I don't get the grant? No. Uh, but what I would be looking for is. Um, the whole, you know, for the tri-band radios, we're looking to, between two years. Was about thirty-two thousand dollars. So we haven't funded for thirty-one thousand just for the tri-band radios over two years. That was our, what we have this set for in the capital budget is our ten percent match if we win, get the grant. So that's kind of our fingers crossed and we're hoping for that grant award. And that would be our match for the federal government is um, thirty-one thousand. Uh, so that's it. And looking out the um, from five years out, we do have a pumper scheduled for replacement. Uh, our pumpers are uh, replaced at twenty years. We start to um. Look at replacement for those. This one is over twenty years right now. And um. That's gonna be roughly, we're estimating it's six seventy-five for uh, two more years out. And then our SCBA, our breathing apparatus, uh, will be at twenty years old in two thousand twenty-seven. So that's uh, uh, they're starting to cost us a little more for repairs right now. Um, so we're looking at um. Three hundred fifty thousand and twenty-seven uh, for major capital um, costs coming up. Both of those are grant eligible though, so that's um, you know, a target in those two years is to uh. To write a grant for those, to attempt it. Right? Uh, so that's the capital request. I'll take any question.
Any questions for the council?
What's the age that you uh, recruit volunteers? What's the youngest?
A week eighteen. We don't, uh, we do not have a um, a junior program right now. Um. Want to get the volunteers core up and running first. Juniors are a little, another um, challenge. I did that uh, my previous life. Um, but um, it's eighteen to certify as firefighter. Um, so that's. Looking at options.
There's six uh, always on staff.
Six firefighters in the firehouse twenty-four seven.
Is it twenty-four on, seventy-two off?
Correct, yes.
My brother's a captain of Jersey Fire Department.
They stay have a twenty-four, uh, twenty-four seventy-two also?
Yeah.
Go any south of than that, they don't. That's that. So it's good.
He's going for battalion chief.
Good for him.
Yep.
So that's just, Albie, I know you know about the, the council's support of recruitment and retention. We recently wrote an ordinance to try to help with that. So any, any uh, anything further that we can do to help, you know. Uh, bolster or help you guys uh, recruit and retain is, is big, because obviously that saves the town a lot of money. So. Um, and.
It's open to everyone, that's it.
The, the history of the volunteer fire department in this town is, is unbelievable. So um. Of course, you know, we've got to keep that going because it's, it's saved, if you ever calculate how much money that volunteer. Organization has saved this town, the, the number's huge. So.
Do you speak out, do you go to public events and actually, you know, talk to large groups? To say what kind of volunteers you need and?
Yeah, I think it's been, Russ, I'll, I'll have you jump in here for what you guys been doing over the last few years, but COVID's kind of put a. The last two years, it's been a little slower.
I've been exceptionally difficult because those opportunities where you'd be out face to face. Talking to people, interfacing with them and have just been removed. Um, so, you know, we pivoted to those years. Like, for many of you remember, we did the COVID shield operation where our volunteers got masked all across the state of Connecticut, incredible work, but. But it took a lot away from us and that combined with the fact, which was great, that a lot of our folks got hired because you make great products. Um, it, and the ordinance has certainly helped with those who were here that, you know, especially those members who perhaps don't have aspiration to becoming a career firefighter. They're a little older or set, or they have a career already that they're happy with their family. Uh, that is certainly a strong uh, encourager for them to, to remain and be very active. Uh, and that's, I think, an important part. Because we put qualifications ourselves as the fire company of a minimum bar of participation in drills and fires for calls. Not certified, uh, incidents that has, we've seen it with people. It has got them to go to halls and drills where perhaps they might not have because they feel rewarded by the town, you know? And so that's a, that's a wonderful thing. So we appreciate that.
That's great.
I was just thinking like, you know, there's so many churches in town, like take five minutes at the end of whatever service and just. Just to raise the visibility and, you know, tell people what it requires and just a thought.
No, it's, I wasn't even thinking of that one. That was on my.
We should do it for admissions at a school.
Newcomers, yeah, I'm, like, my eyes are on the newcomers club, like, I'm getting new people coming in. So, and, you know. You know, decent, you know, thirty, you know, moms and dads, you know, in good shape, you know, come on down. You know, it's not a bad um. You know, option to do.
Gotta get the parents that are like, their kids are a little older, they're, you know, wanna do something.
Yeah, and I mean, I remember uh, years ago, Row Eighten brought in three housewives. You know, that was, that was a big deal back in the nineties and it was like, all right, so there's, we must have a lot of them that might be interested. You know, that uh, that's a good, you know, target to kind of help with that. We do have a couple, um, a few male volunteers that would help us. Uh, with that. Um, the high school kids are never really recruited and that's something that I, you know, I've been talking to the fire company a little bit about. The fear of the high school kids is they're going off to college, but Darian uses them effectively. Because uh, they grab them back at Thanksgiving weekend, they get them for, you know, Christmas. Uh, and those, you know, and you know, back over the summer if they're coming home. So there, there is a somewhat of a benefit uh, to those. It's, you know, we've got to look at the cost benefit. How much are we, if I could keep the cost down to, to get them trained? And maybe they become a firefighter at their college. And some of those, you know, that, maybe there's a benefit there to do that.
That gives our parents comfortable with, you can do college and come back. We have one at West Point right now. You don't get much harder college than that. You do a great, so.
Yeah, so we're looking at all those different, you know, so if, let me know, you know, so if I'm missing something and, you know. Let me know where we can round them up.
I know, I know, I know it's getting late. We've got one, a couple more presentations, but um, one, a, a member of the public asked me specifically. With the advent of the new sort of taller structures that we're putting up in town. Uh, one twenty-three comes to mind, you know, where we're up into a higher story. That our current apparatus, ladder trucks, et cetera, are, are they more than capable to fight that type of? If, if we did have an incident on one of those top floors, are we still okay?
Yes, and that's where building codes and the proactiveness and, and fire protection, some of these buildings. Do limit our access around some of those buildings, but we definitely have the, the reach on all of them. And they're putting in like, I'll use the view, so for, there's um, we could drive up that center road to get, to, to access all the buildings. But we can't get all sides of them. Um, but again, being proactive, the sprinkler systems are really doing the uh. Doing the job and, you know. We don't need to, they, what they, the state claims and the fire code claims, we don't need to get to all sides, but the sides we can get to, yes, we can reach all of them. Uh, and we look at that now. Uh, fire marshal's been great at bringing plans over to the chief and, you know, the firefighters to take a look at those plans. To say, what are the problems? So it's someone that's actually operational is looking at.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we'll come look at the new truck when we get a chance.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Russ, you're up next.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
How do you get a trip on the old fire truck?
Cool sweat.
Russ is gonna, Russ is gonna go in like five minutes.
Yeah, Russ.
You can ride all the time.
Alrighty. Good evening.
Good evening.
I will be exceptionally brief, as I know you've all been here very late this evening. So uh, for those who have not met, uh, had the pleasure of meeting, I'm Russ Kimes. I'm emergency management director uh, for the town. Uh, emergency management's a small group. Uh, it's myself and Phil Shively. We're part-time. Uh, you know, we give it all, but you know, it's a part-time position. Uh, and obviously our, our mission profile is, is, you know, across all of the departments in the town. Uh, disaster, emergency preparedness, response. Uh, and obviously, I hate to say it, we've learned in the world that we're in today. That it's, seems to be an unfortunate cadence of just navigating one crisis after another. Um, whether it's a global pandemic, um, my goodness, now with the Ukraine and, and threats of nuclear weapons. It's, it's, it's really staggering. It, it doesn't seem that there has been, I, I can't think I've been a volunteer for twenty-three years in the fire department. I can't think of a time where we've had this much continuing activity. Uh, and to, for us as a municipality, we be prepared for that, you can't make those plans up when the event happens. You have to prepare for it and you have to have the equipment, the training, the personnel to be able to navigate them. Um, so highlights are lowlights, because unfortunately, most of what we deal with, they're not the, uh, the, the best uh, scenarios. The pandemic is continuing uh, on an official standpoint, although obviously things are certainly looking up and up. Uh, during the past uh, year, we had the COVID test kit and mass distributions. You probably remember those. Uh, working in partnership with the state and then in, in particular, I cannot praise uh, the uh, CERT team, the Community Emergency Response Team. Stuart Sarabini and all of his folks uh, for the incredible willingness to drop, at the drop of a hat, go stand out in the parking lot in freezing cold at night. And distribute masks and test kits to our citizens when they really want and need them the most to feel protected. Uh, we had the remnants of Ida, Hurricane Ida, you may have forgotten about that, which was the uh, remarkable flooding that we had uh, during that event. Uh, Hurricane Henri, tropical storm Elsa, um, you know, so it, as I said, the cadence doesn't stop. Uh, we even had, I, since I wrote this, uh, we had the, the flash ice freezing uh, event. We had to do the call out in the morning to try to encourage our residents to stay off the roads. Um, we, as an office, are responsible for the New Canaan Local Emergency Operation Plan. We partner with the Board of Ed for the schools, public school safety plan, uh, which is over three hundred pages. Uh, and we also work for things like uh, dam breaks, emergency action plans for those, uh, as well as we work in partnership. We're the ones who uh, authorize CERT activations. Um, so the, in the upcoming year, we're planning to host a tabletop exercise with all of the department heads. Not just first responders. We're, we're hoping to get the selectmen's office, we're hoping to get public works, all the key players. Um, to have an actual tabletop to stress our folks and their SOPs, their standard operating procedures. To see how they would react to a truly unique situation. And obviously, I don't want to spill the beans to all the department heads. But potentially could involve things with technology failures, as, as we, as we know, especially with what's going on with Ukraine, is a very real possibility. Uh, electronics and infrastructure failure, communications failure, right? Now, how that could occur in many ways, but you know, it's something that we need to test ourselves. So that's an exercise we're looking to do this year. Uh, also, we've started in the last two years, starting to take a more management position or uh, managing our municipal public radio system. Uh, before it was kind of each department kind of had their slice of the pie, but it was never really looked at from a, a top-down from town level. Uh, so we've been engaged and we thank you uh, for your willingness uh, and approval for the Motorola service contract for that infrastructure last year. And actually, it's on the Capitol as the second year of that. Uh, and then the other one is the incident command trailer, which Josh, I think is out now? Okay, it was, we presented it to Board of Finance, they asked us to come back for a special appropriation. So I won't even talk about that one tonight, but I certainly hope that we have your support when we come back for that one. Uh, and then long-term for us is future state of our radio infrastructure in particular. Um, we were in the, you may remember from the last time I was here, we were in the unfavorable position where Motorola would, was unable or unwilling, we're not sure. To tell us the actual capital, you know, the cost expenditures to replace the equipment. Uh, our contract good for five years. Are there potential efficiencies that we can get by going off the state backbone? Those sorts of things. So, uh, so that's it. In a nutshell, uh, we have a, we're a small budget. Uh, I'll just go through our lines real quick. Salaries and social security remain uh, flat. They're, they're, they're provided to us by HR. On-site contractors, uh, as you have seen, and if you look at the year-over-year from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, wildly fluctuated over the years. Um, twenty-one was actually so high because we felt we were doing the Motorola contract and that year it didn't happen. I think we've managed it now where it's gonna be more reflective of, of actual needs. Um, so that includes Everbridge, which is our mass notification. So when we do the call-outs to our residents, which has become an incredibly useful tool for us. Uh, that includes the Country Club cell tower, which is a site that also contains or has a site for our public safety radio network. Uh, part of the agreement is that we pay for the power and things for that. Uh, GIS licenses, so we actually have worked with Time Bond and Tiger's team. Uh, and our vendor for GIS, that now we've moved from Google Maps to when we stand up our command center, we actually have a true enterprise system to know where. Roads are closed, trees are down, those sorts of things. Um, training is flat, that's our annual training exercise. Uh, travel is zero, because the nice thing is hopefully that we'll actually be able to do it. But for uh, Phil and I, if we go down into the federal schools, it's free. It's a, it's a federal provided. Um, repairs, emergency equipment is up and the reason for that is, uh, there's our regular twenty-two hundred preventive maintenance. We own a number of assets that are given to us by the state of Connecticut, uh, including some mobile message boards, an animal shelter trailer, a human shelter trailer. Um, and we're responsible for the upkeep on those. So if, if, you know, they gave them to us, they can call them back and use them anytime. We have to keep them in working condition. Uh, it also includes a uh, of what we call wrapping, uh, the CERT fly car. So for those who don't know, the CERT team has a vehicle which um, is going to be replaced uh, this year. The ambulance corps' old paramedic fly car will go to CERT. Um, and they will be able to use it in, in, with their activities. They have been, they've done amazing work with, you know, being able to get fundraising to operate. And it's at a point where they need the town's commitment and help, and that's where we as an officer stepping in uh, to do that. So it, to get it wrapped and get it to radios that it needs for them to be able to operate safely. They have done so much for this town that it's the very minimum we could do. Um, supplies general is the only thing, it's, that's things like our ID card licenses used by police firing EMS. As you see, the theme here is, everything in here is cross all of our departments, uh, our uh, first responder agencies. And voice and data is up only because Phil and I got cell phones and we need to be on call twenty-four seven and our, and, and that wasn't something that was in the budget before. Uh, equipment emergency is uh, CERT equipment, which is jackets, reflective vests. Uh, we're gonna try to replace some computers in our call center and the command center. Because uh, we have tablets, iPad tablets that literally will not accept download updates anymore. They are at end of life. Uh, and then we have a thing called the U.S. Sustainability, which is our partnership and a state backbone radio, which is incredibly important for us. Because as we found at the Devonwood Road Fire, which the chief was talking about where we had our, our substantial loss, our entire radio structure, infrastructure for the town went out. Also due to a lightning strike. Uh, so we're gonna be pushing as an office that all of the agencies use, have that available to them as a backup. Because it's a totally separate system uh, for us to be able to communicate. So something we're working on. So that's uh, upgrading capital. The only thing is the Motorola hu- our hardware and software agreement, which is the second year. We're already in the contract for year two oh five, replacing hardware, software, making sure that we have the latest uh, software. So that we're not vulnerable to hacking and things like that, uh, as well as it gives us twenty-four hour support uh, and monitoring. Um, and like I said, we'll comes back for the incident command trailer in a month or two, and we hope to get your support for that.
Great, thank you, Russ.
Thank you. I just have one, I have one question, and we talked about this when you, and he gave you, that's a very thorough uh. I have one question and we talked about this when you, and he gave you, that's a very thorough, uh, presentation and I had seen it. I had seen it before. Yeah. Um, I, I had one question before, and this is not just about the money side, but in terms of streamlining communications, because you had Everbridge. I know this like the school, like the school has its own communications and then we have the town and then we have you. And I'm just curious, like, does one supersede the other? Can you combine that? Like, what, is there a way to make that a little bit more streamlined?
So I want to talk, I'm going to talk to Brian, uh, because he's on, he's on our emergency operations committee to talk about that because the choice to move from Blackboard, which I think is what board of ed uses to Everbridge preceded by, uh, time in the office. Um, we're very happy with Everbridge and you have to populate the lists for the callouts. Either you gotta get the information yourself or residents, what we're trying to push is residents go onto the town hall website and sign up for it. So there definitely would be synergies there for us to.
Yeah. Cause I'm sorry, I, I, it's confusing because there's, you sign up for this, the school and, uh, so it, it would be great, especially if there is an emergency that you have the biggest list.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
And I know we went off of, uh, one of the reasons they went off Blackboard to Everbridges is it actually has the ability for us to do geographic notifications. So I can draw on a map everybody's houses within this range. Say we had a hazardous materials leak or something like that.
Right.
The reality is.
Yes, I would, I guess the bottom line is I would just, yeah, think about how you might want to streamline that in general.
I have that as an agenda item. Talk with Brian when I see you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Rita. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all the, all the work you do on those callouts.
Oh, absolutely. And thank you all for, uh, very late nights. We appreciate what you do. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Nancy. Last but not least, Nancy, Nancy, Nancy. So sorry that's so late. Apologies.
It's late for all of you too.
Welcome.
I don't have a presentation. I just want to go over some of the numbers.
Sure.
So if you've got the spreadsheet in front of you, um, if we look at the operating, there are three lines I want to talk about. The first one is the outsourced paramedic service. That is a fixed, it's currently under a five-year fixed contract. The future year, this next budget year will be the fifth year. So we'll need to renegotiate a contract and obviously then it could go up, but at the moment there's no increase. We're still in the five-year plan. This is the contract with Norwalk Hospital to provide a paramedic that stays here in New Canaan and services our calls twenty-four by seven. Um, the next one is four down. It's called town contribution. This is the historic bucket that the town pays us to pay all of the services for the ambulance maintenance and the ambulance supplies. There's about, you know, seven million purchases throughout the fiscal year. You don't want to have to be paying from town hall. You know, we, we know our vendors, we sign off when we've actually ordered something and it's accurate. So, um, this amount which we kept flat from last year is the contribution to our bank account to pay the bills that covered the ambulances, supplies and maintenance. And then the last item I wanted to note was the, the bottom one called information services. That is a contract with the organization to do dispatching for us as well as a somewhat state required monitoring of all ambulance activity. So it's the organization, if you've heard maybe police refer sort of as C med, Connecticut med, there are five of them in Connecticut. So we're in the southwest region. Um, the organization itself has to monitor all nine-one-one ambulances. Uh, so every single nine-one-one service in the region lets them know where they're going, what they're going for, where they are now, change of status. Um, somewhat in case there's a mass casualty in the area, this coordination function can be performed by C med as far as what ambulances are where, who's available for what, what hospitals are available. So they connect us to the hospital and we communicate with the hospital en route through their service. That's the, that's part of that, uh, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred. Uh, the other is the actual dispatching. So the nine-one-one call goes to the police station. They are primary nine-one-one service, police station. If it's fire, it goes to fire dispatching in Westport. If it's EMS, it goes to C med who has an office in Shelton. That's where their service is. And they're the ones sitting in Shelton who talk with our residents or businesses about their nine-one-one call. They then dispatch us and we're on the radio with them the entire time from start of call to end of call. So that went up this year. They went up three percent. All the other line items are not provided or controlled by us. They support our headquarters. So the service that is being provided, the number was put down for us. We didn't, so the only one we really kind of control is that one called town contribution. And we kept it flat. That's the operating. Okay. Then on the capital. Um, this very current year, we're getting a new paramedic fly car. It's an SUV, but we call it a fly car. So when a call comes out, a serious call, uh, our minimal duty crew of two in an ambulance goes off in the ambulance and the paramedic goes off in their SUV fly car. And then based on what we find, what's important, you know, like if the patient really needs that paramedic, the paramedic moves their equipment into our ambulance, hops in and we go to the hospital. So they have a car that is being replaced this year. So the current one of sixty-five K is for a new fly car. That is about every six years we replace that. Okay. So then what did we go forward in the five-year plan? We like to replace our ambulances. We have three of them every nine years. So the first, we call them rigs, first ambulance is in service for nine years. Then three years later, we switch out that one and three years later we switch out the next. So in a nine-year period, we've switched out all of them. So what you'll see is in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, that two, two-ten, two thousand ten K is for a new ambulance that will be replacing one that's been in service for nine years. And then in twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, another one. We've kind of looked at, should we up the price? I mean, we don't know what a new ambulance is going to cost then, but we just kept it flat. So two-ten each time.
What do you do with the old ones?
Um, so we use the nine-year limit because they're resellable at nine. You go out further than that and they're not so resellable. A while back it was that you couldn't get them insured. I think that's changed somewhat. And also the cost of maintaining them after nine years really goes up.
What do you get back in trading it in?
You want the dollar value?
Approximately. It's just.
Sorry, don't think I know. Um, but so.
Do you trade them in or do you sell them?
It can be both.
Okay.
I mean, the same vehicle can't be both. The answer is both. And another one is a while back, we actually passed one on to the, uh, police department and they used it for their SWAT vehicle.
Some straight line depreciated over seven years.
I'm going to turn that over to someone in finance.
That's a huge benefit.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's, this is, you're at the end of the evening, Nancy, but it, basically this is the best deal of any department of any place that we could ever ask, you know, anywhere in the state. We have a, a volunteer ambulance corps in this town that is second to none. And every year that I've ever looked at this budget, I always say, oh my gosh, this is easily the best thing we do in this town. I mean, easily. And, you know.
Well, you can see there's no personnel costs.
I mean, it, it is absolutely remarkable that over the, the past decades of what this, what this ambulance corps has provided this town, it's just unbelievable.
Since nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't know how, if you want, do you want to spend a second on your recruitment and retention? I mean, how are you guys doing for your, for your personnel? Do you?
We're always looking for people. Um, COVID did hit, hit hard. We had people who could no longer, we call it riding, but essentially work a shift every week, which is what we require. They had kids at home that had to be schooled.
Right.
They had elderly parents. They had, uh, compromised people in their house or they were compromised. They were fearful. We're volunteers and here people are volunteering to go work with COVID patients. So, um, our numbers went down quite a bit. Uh, we, we have a nice active corps. We also have a group of people who are students. Since we're volunteer, it's like, okay, they go off to college or wherever they are and summer breaks, holidays, they can come back and ride with us. We don't want to lose them. So we have this pool of personnel who are students. So we don't see them except every so often. Then we have the on leave. Their personal health issues, um, uh, personal issues. They're, they're making changes and decisions about their life. And this maybe isn't what they want to spend their time doing. So they might take a two-month leave. Or they actually have a place in Colorado in the wintertime and like to go skiing or a place in Florida or whatever. So we allow that. We want the flexibility because we want to retain people who are valuable to us. And then we have this other group who are probationary members and it's quite large. That's our entry pool. So they've gotten their certification to be an E M T in Connecticut or nationwide. But we need them to learn our process. Um, our protocols and we want to make sure they know their skills. Well, you go through a class and you learn it, right? But it's not really learning. So it's six to twelve months and that pool of people do not fill our minimum requirements of a crew. They're extra personnel. So we carry not in personnel costs, but in time and commitment to a pool of people who are learning the job and may not be active for a whole year. So that's our personnel. So recruiting, um, we're always in need of recruitment. Yeah, always. But we, we have great incentives. It's a lovely group of people. We have a wonderful building for our headquarters. Um, we were very pleased to get the tax abatement last year. Um, and while the tax abatement is a dollar amount, we love getting the tennis permits and the pool pass and the.
Lobsters.
So these little perks go a long way.
It's the least we could do. I mean, the amount of, the amount of care you guys have given this town over the years is, as I said, remarkable. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, any other?
I have a question. You mentioned a paramedic.
Yeah.
The, the hospital provides the paramedic?
It is Norwalk Hospital that provides the paramedic. Um, we could have a contract, the town owns this contract, could have a contract with any paramedic service, but we've chosen Norwalk Hospital. Stanford is a candidate, but it's not Stanford Hospital. It's Stanford EMS. So they have their own organization and could provide a paramedic, um, service. That's what, uh, is done in Darian.
Do we pay their salary?
We pay, so this contract fee, three hundred ninety-nine K, um, is paying for their salary, their insurance, their employee stuff. But I mean, we don't pay any individual paramedic. We pay the hospital.
Okay.
And they have to source a person, you know, twenty, they, they have similar shifts as we do, but we must have a pool of fifteen paramedics that we see.
So it's, it's a twenty-four hours, seven day a week.
Commitment, but they usually do, um, a, an eight or a twelve-hour shift.
Per day.
Each day. Right.
Day. Okay.
So we had a, a paramedic who started at seven this morning and he was on probably till seven PM. Sometimes they go till eleven PM and then a new one comes on at eleven, works till seven in the morning.
Okay.
So it, they set up their own schedule. They arrive and we look at them and say, good morning or good evening. We don't really have much say.
What is the advantage of having that?
Uh, advanced life support.
Okay.
They're a much higher level. They're actually an extension of the doctor in the ER.
Okay.
We need them.
Okay.
Great. All right. So Nancy, I think, you know, I, one, one of the things that we've, we rushed to the end of the night here, but I'd love to have you rotate back through at a future meeting and we get you on very early. So we, you know, because I can't, you know, we can't talk enough about what you guys do. So maybe I'll bring another member or two back and, uh, we'll have you back. Okay?
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You. All right. Um, I'm going to entertain a motion to, um, table our committee reports until tomorrow night.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. That's unanimous. Okay. Uh, oh, thank you, Hillary.
Yep.
Uh, so that is it. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
Okay. That was, uh, Mark and Christina and meeting is adjourned. It's ten fifty-one. Uh, and thank you so much. Bob, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Night.
Appreciate it.
Do you, do you know who made those motions?